Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. It's Monday, November 27, 2023. Thank you all for joining us here in the council chambers. Thanks to everybody watching this evening online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome to everyone. Hope everybody had a good, long holiday weekend. Counsel, our first item this evening is to approve tonight's agenda. And on our agenda, under introductory items, we have actually six items under the introductory items. We're going to have Councilmember Muah taking the oath of office. We've got a proclamation for Bloomington Symphony Orchestra Day. Looking forward to that. We've got appointments, then, to our HRA Board, our Planning Commission, and the Merit Board. And then we're going to have an update on our federal lobbying efforts. Under Item Three, our Consent Business Councilmember Lohman has the consent items this evening, and we have 11 of those tonight. Hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We've got seven items there, and we kind of go back and forth between a number of different things. The first is a resolution regarding approval to the issuance of revenue bonds. The second is also a resolution regarding our proposed changes to fees and charges scheduled. There will be a public comment opportunity for that. We will have then two public hearings. One on an ordinance to increase our wastewater and water rates. Item 4.4 is an ordinance to increase our solid waste and refuse collection fees. Back to resolutions for Item Five to change our stormwater charges. And a resolution on Item 4.6 approving the 2024 Utility Fund budgets. And then back to a public hearing, again, this being the Human Rights Commission ordinance. Our final items of the evening are under our Organizational Business. Item 5.1 is regarding our Business Assistance Programs. And Item 5.2 is regarding our signed ordinance study discussion. It's our second time we're going to be taking that on, and we'll wrap up, as we typically do, with our city council policy and issue updates. Counsel, any corrections, updates, or additions to our agenda this evening? If not, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero. And with that, it's my opportunity to mention that Councilmember Dalisandro is not with us this evening. She is actually on vacation, so good for her. I hope she's enjoying someplace warmer than it is here in Bloomington right now. We have an agenda, so now our first agenda item is Item 2.1, which is the oath of office for Councilmember Muah. Our city clerk, Christina Scipione, is going to be administering the oath of office. But first of all, if you could, on Iscipione, could you explain to us why Councilmember Muah is being sworn in tonight as opposed to January 2?
Certainly. Hello, Mayor and City Council. So Councilmember Muah is being sworn in this evening because we had a vacancy in our council office for his at-large seat earlier this year due to the election of Nathan Coulter to the state legislature. And so the council made an appointment, which was Sam Muah, until the successor was elected at a regularly-scheduled city election. And so we had that election earlier this month, and the results are now official for that. They were canvassed, the recount period has passed. And so now Sam Muah's new term in office is effective today. And so we're doing our swearing-in today. The oaths of office for the remainder of the council members that were elected and our newly incoming council member will be at the beginning of January when those terms begin.
Thank you for that explanation. I think people will just wonder why we're swearing in Councilmember Muah and none of the other official swearing-ins. So I appreciate that explanation. Councilmember Muah, why don't you take yourself center stage? And let's do this. I know there's a lot of family here, and this is a big and special night. I would encourage you, do not be shy. This is going to happen. And it's a special time, so if you need to get up and get yourself in a good position to take a picture, get in a good position to take a picture.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I saw Muah do solemnly swear.
I saw Muah do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the office of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the city of Bloomington.
Of the city of Bloomington.
In the county of Hennepin.
The county of Hennepin.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. We'll now have Councilmember Muah sign his official oath.
I'm pleased to present you with your certificate of election. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations, Councilmember Muah. Very happy to have you sworn in officially. I think I mentioned last, at our last meeting, these past few months, it's like your redshirt year. It's like your redshirt year, and now you're fully on board and looking forward to all the good things that you're going to be accomplishing over the next couple of years. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, first of all, I just wanted to thank my family for being here. I thank my wife, Shauna, for putting up with everything over the last year. She's really been our rock at home, so I appreciate all the support here. And then also seeing my kids here and how excited they are about City Council. I think they bring the viewership of our City Council meetings down probably about 50 years. So, but that's wonderful to see how that's engaging them and bringing more, you know, light into what we do here in City Council. So looking forward to what we're going to do over the next couple of years here. And so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next on our agenda is our proclamation for the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra Day. I'm going to head down to the podium. You're not going to leave. Our proclamation this evening is regarding Bloomington Symphony Orchestra Day, and it's recognized in the 60th anniversary of the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra. I know we have some representatives come on up. What I'd like to do is have you up here with me as I read the proclamation, and we'll turn the microphone over to you. And then, of course, we've got to do the grip and grin and get the camera out and take our pictures as well. So, good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here this evening. Proclamation this evening for Bloomington Symphony Orchestra Day, November 27, 2023. Whereas it is with great pleasure and profound honor that I extend heartfelt congratulations to the 75-member Bloomington Symphony Orchestra and their music director, Manny Luriano, on the momentous occasion of the 60th anniversary. And whereas for six decades, the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra has brought music lovers and accomplished musicians together to experience inspirational performances of orchestral music with community as the cornerstone. And whereas the talented musicians of the BSO, who are guided by the values of excellence, collaboration, and dedication, have come to the city to rehearse every week for the past 60 years. And whereas through countless performances, educational initiatives, and community engagements touching the lives of hundreds of thousands of audience members, the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra has contributed to the city's mission of cultivating an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And whereas the orchestra's unwavering dedication to the pursuit of musical excellence has not only entertained but also inspired generations of residents to appreciate the beauty and the power of music and proven its commitment to the cultural and artistic growth in Bloomington. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bassi, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim November 27 as Bloomington Symphony Orchestra Day in celebration of their 60th anniversary. I urge all residents to join me in recognizing and applauding the outstanding achievements of the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra and express our deepest gratitude for their enduring contribution to the cultural vitality of our city dated this 27th day of November, 2023. Congratulations. I mean, 60 years is an impressive run of any community organization anywhere for any reason. But for a symphony orchestra that is so unique to a community of 90,000 people, it is absolutely unique. So congratulations, and I hope you offer and extend our congratulations to the rest of the orchestra as well. And just so proud and so very happy. And as I promised, I will be happy to turn the microphone over. Please, please.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. On behalf of the musicians, the board, and quite frankly, the audiences that have come to our concerts, whether they've been at the Normandale Band Show or at the Schneider Theater or the Masonic Heritage Center or Orchestra Hall, we have been very proud to present concerts with the name Bloomington attached to them. And we hope that this continues on for a good, long time. We thank you very much.
We have to do the official grip and grin. Who wants to grab the official picture? Why don't we step over here so we can clear the podium? Hand you the proclamation. Very good. Congratulations, Your Honor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up are Items 2.3, 4, and 5, where we're going to be doing appointments. For 2.3 is for our HRA Board, and 2.4 is for our Planning Commission, and 2.5 is for the Merit Board. And Counsel, the HRA Board appointment is a bit of a unique one because officially, according to our city charter, it is a mayor's appointment. And now, we went through the interview process. We went through the same process that we would do otherwise. It's just a matter of the language of the charter that it is an appointment and it isn't a vote of the City Council. And so after the work that we did and the look that we had, I'm going to make the recommendation, Counsel, that we appoint Samiriy Issey to the term from January 1st. I'm sorry, correct me, Jamie. Samira, thank you. Samira Issey to a term from January 1st, 21/24, to December 31st, 2028, to our HRA Board of Directors. We have a motion and a second to make the appointment as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero. Thank you so very much. Next up are our Planning Commission appointments. And with the Planning Commission, we had, I believe, four applicants. And I think there will be one appointment made. And once again, if you, within your packet, we have a recommendation from the interview panel that did do the interviews. I'm trying to catch up here with my, there they are. On our interview panel, we had, I believe, Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Dalisandro, and then Paige Roman, the Chair of our Planning Commission, as well. And Councilmember Martin, do you want to give us just a brief overview of the discussion that your interview panel had and the recommendation that you'd be making for the council today?
Yeah, absolutely. I was really heartened. We had some really enthusiastic, experienced folks put their names forward to participate, especially our final two, as the packet recognizes. Mr. Issey and Mr. Cunningham both had some really interesting takes on the direction of the board and the effect it's had on work they've done previously. I know our final recommendation for Abdi Shaker is a business owner in the community and had thoughts about how the decisions of the Planning Commission affect their day-to-day operations. So in the end, we did recommend moving forward with Mr. Issey. But again, I thought it was pretty incredible to see so many folks willing to toss their hats in the ring and spend a lot of time to move the community forward.
Counsel, any questions? And Councilmember Martin? Well, unlike the HRA appointment, this is actually a vote that we do go through here. We have the recommendation of the interview panel, and we will be taking a vote. Everybody gets one vote for the one opening that we do have on the Planning Commission. And Councilmember, let's see. I was looking at my list here. Councilmember Dalisandro was scheduled to start our voting here today. But it looks like we're going to start with, Councilmember Muah gets our first vote this evening, and we'll work our way right down the line. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll vote for Abdi Shaker Issey.
Councilmember Nelson.
Kevin Cunningham.
Councilmember Carter.
Cunningham.
Councilmember Lohman.
I'll go with Abdi Shaker Issey.
Councilmember Martin.
I will do Mr. Issey as well.
And I will cast my vote for Mr. Issey as well, which if my math is correct, it looks like we have four votes. Do I hear a motion to appoint Mr. Issey to the Planning Commission opening that we have?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Muah to appoint Abdi Shaker Issey. I'm sure I butchered the name once again, and I apologize for that. Abdi Shukar, thank you very much. Abdi Shukar Issey to our appointment on the Planning Commission. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five-one with Councilmember Nelson in opposition. Thank you very much. And now we have, our final appointments of the evening are for our Merit Board, and we have two openings and actually, one applicant seeking reappointment. We've got a number of, we have two openings and two applicants, one of them seeking reappointment. We've got Casey Kane and John Locks applying for our Merit Board. We could either go through the vote, Counsel, or we could make the motion and make the appointment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember, Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Nelson, oh, excuse me, yes, Nelson, to appoint Casey Kane and John Locks to our Merit Board. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much. Our final item tonight, under Item Two, our introductory items, is an update on our federal lobbying. And we have a representative of our federal lobbying crew here this evening, in from DC, my way of Maryland and Bloomington, Indiana, from what I understand. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Welcome.
Hi. I am so glad to be with you today. I'm Emily Tranner with Primacy Strategy Group. We are the city's federal team in Washington, DC. And I think we've been doing work with you for about four years now. But though I've been in DC since 2004, I did grow up in the metro area. And our firm is based here in the metro area. So we have a really nice kind of feel of back and forth in home versus DC. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on your federal priorities as we, not the full picture, but just a couple of pieces that have been moving forward and kind of give you a sense of what to expect next. So as you are well aware, you know, there's been chaotic times in Washington, DC the last several months, right? With lots of speaker elections and almost shutdowns and not government shutdowns. But for right now, we are holding the line here. And we do have a federal budget that goes until January 19 and February 2nd, respectively. It's very confusing. But in order to avoid the shutdown that, the most recent shutdown on November 17, Congress decided with the leadership of Mike Johnson, Speaker, that they would do a laddered approach, which functionally does nothing at the end of the day, except that it gives us a little bit more time to debate some of the bills, eight of the 12, that need to be passed in full for us to have a full fiscal year 2024 budget, which we are technically in right now. They technically go from October 1st to September 30. In my tenure, in my 20 years in DC, I have not seen a budget pass on time. But we're usually in a scramble right.
Emily, can I interrupt for just a second and ask you to pull the microphone closer?
Oh, sure.
If I could, please?
Is that better?
Just to make sure that we can hear you throughout the building and throughout on our cable.
Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry. So we are under a continuing resolution right now, which usually during, right around the holidays is when there's a mad scramble to have a full budget. But they avoided that by extending it till next year and early in the year. And I can't tell you with any certainty that there'll be less issues, you know, negotiating a full budget come January, February because we're still in the same Congress, still with the same majority and minorities, and still with the same president. However, right now, we're set until then. And what we do in DC is really just watch for, you know, opportunities to plug in the city's priorities and raise your profile within your membership, you know, your federal delegation, which you are all, you know, exceptionally well-known among our senators and your congressmen. But as you know, as you well know, Congress changes and new members come in, which we will be looking at in 2024. So having that Bloomington presence in Washington, DC is really, really key towards your goal. So I wanted to just give you a couple of, you know, underneath the chaos, although it's really, you know, it seemed like Washington doesn't do anything, which, you know, that's a fair assessment. Sometimes there are things happening, you know, kind of behind the scenes is the wrong words, but a steady flow of motion forward on things that matter to municipalities. And really, what we're looking at right now is the playing out of these major federal policy initiatives and funding initiatives that were passed in the last three years that are now long-term bills, like IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That's a five-year bill. And the Inflation Reduction Act is a 10-year bill. And there are new provisions in each of these that, you know, that were really interesting for municipalities. One example is direct pay for, out of IRA, for investments in renewables that federal funding, or excuse me, the tax benefit can come straight back to the city. That hasn't happened before this administration and this bill. But two of the projects that you, as a counselor, last year moved forward as sort of priority projects to keep in the process, the earmarking process, which I'm going to talk about a little bit more in a moment, those continue to move forward. I'm going to give you just a synopsis of where we're at with the earmark process and then what to expect next. So under this continuing resolution that we are operating under now, there is no new funding. It's all the same levels, and there's no new policy. However, we have been going through the earmark process or congressionally-directed spending process since last March. And we did submit in that process federal funding request for the new drinking water supply for the city and also for the Small Business Development Center. And right now, one of those projects moved forward in this year's process. So in the House, the well project has about $979,000. And in the Senate, there's $1.01 million. And we are pushing for the higher amount to be in the final bill, which will be fantastic. The Small Business Center did not make it in the final bill, although our senators did put that forward and supported it very strongly. So essentially, where we are is we are waiting for a full budget that will have these member-directed projects or congressionally-directed spending. They are items that your members of Congress, Dean Phillips and the senators say, hey, that project is good for my district. So it's not a, you know, it's not a Department of Energy decision or interior decision, it's a congressional decision. And that is a really strong tool for our members to bring back to their cities and counties. And only municipalities and nonprofits are eligible for this process. And they aren't huge amounts. These are not the $60 million that the city was a leader on for Infra grants. This isn't, you know, $100 million for a big bridge. These are 1.2 to 5, biggest one is around $7 million, kind of in the world of earmarks. And so what to expect next is because we are under this continuing resolution, we still have to negotiate a full budget, which will include or would include these projects. And there was some fear or concern that the earmarks would just be slashed at the end for us to get a full budget. And it's certainly not, you know, impossible. I can't guarantee that earmarks will stay in this budget once we get a full fiscal year 2024 budget done. However, they are not in anyone's crosshairs, and they are becoming increasingly popular on both sides of the aisle and both chambers. So we feel really good about the opportunity for the well project to move forward in the final bill. And we're going to be working with your staff and, you know, understanding what's next, which is right when we pass that fiscal year 2024 budget, we're going to have to start the next year's budget process because that moves all the way back. You know, if we're looking for when it's supposed to pass in September, it works backwards till about March, where we have to start this process. So over the next couple of months, we'll be working to make sure we've got viable, you know, projects that the council mayor and council supports that we put forward in this process. But we're also looking at infrastructure, IIJA and IRA funding to see if there's any places there that can be used for these priority projects or opportunistic plays, basically. Okay, this just popped up. This would be great for the city of Bloomington. Let's connect on it and really dig in and advocate and support it out in Washington, DC. So that's where we're at right now. It's incredibly complicated, even, you know, I've never seen anything like this. And most people that I work with have never seen anything like this in Washington, DC. It's really kind of bizarre and unprecedented, as they say. However, as I said, there are things happening behind the scenes, and we continue to push forward and make sure that, you know, Bloomington is front and center as there's funding opportunities that come down the pike and as, you know, major policy decisions are made that we're making sure that we're not only being proactive about funding opportunities, but playing defense on things, you know, along with your counterparts across the country in municipalities, your size, larger and smaller. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight, although it is way colder here than it is in DC. But I don't mind that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tranner. Questions, Counsel? I'm just going to turn to Mr. Verbrugge very quickly here, and if you could give a quick description or synopsis of the well project that Mr. Tranner was talking about.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, actually, I see that Scott Anderson is our Utilities Superintendent. He's been working hard on this project. So I'm going to invite Mr. Anderson up to talk about it real quickly.
Good evening, Mr. Anderson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, not expecting this night, but we have been working on this for a long time, so I'm pretty in tune with what we're doing. We have, as you likely know, the city has a dual water supply for our customers and residents. We purchase service water from the city of Minneapolis, and then we lime-soften and treat groundwater from six existing deep wells here in Bloomington. A couple of years ago, one of those wells began and ultimately reached its end of life. And so we've been working on plans to, A, abandon that well and then develop a new well so that we're able to maintain kind of the firm capacity or the minimum capacity of our treatment plant, maintain the resiliency of that dual-source system and maintain our water quality. So we, through that process, completed a feasibility study, a siting analysis, and then put together a budget. As Ms. Tranner pointed out, a couple of stars aligned, and we saw an opportunity. So we put some things together and visited DC and made our pitch for that project as well as the Small Business Center project. And we made some headway there, you know, so far. And so hopefully, if things continue as Emily mentioned, we'll see some, we'll actually see that coming through hopefully in 2024. We, plans and specs are underway currently. We're looking to bid that project early in 2024. So we'll be moving and hopefully have the funding to help us out.
Thank you for that. And just for everyone's information, where would it be located?
It will be located at Tarnhill Park, south, kind of south edge of Tarnhill Park, just north of 98th Street.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any questions on the quick update? Councilmember Lohman? No, I'm sorry. Any questions on that? Very good, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Trantor? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. Can't let you come all the way here and not ask one question. I'll try to keep it quick, because I know we've got a busy agenda there. So, I know we've got a fair amount, and you had mentioned the earmark process has got its limitations, but those other two bills that you mentioned, because I'm not a federal person, I'm not going to even attempt to try to note those. But I'm just wondering in terms of, you know, what you've seen other cities do, you know, we have a fair number of capital things that are within our CIP that we can, and I don't want to talk details here, but, you know, what are some things we could maybe look to try to do, to try to take advantage of some of those funds that are out there, that would be advantageous for us as a city, since we have, you know, quite a few capital expenses that are in our CIP that need to be resolved? I'd be a question after you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, unprecedented in the chaos, and then unprecedented in the investment right now, and how that's playing out. And so, I think a lot of the investment is into hard infrastructure. So, you are putting forward your water projects, you know, you did secure $60 million for number one, transportation project out of Infra Grants for 494, which that program existed before the big infrastructure influx of funding, but it was, you know, really, really flooded with more funding. So, in your capital improvement projects, you know, interchanges, you know, street improvements, and those, portions of those can be in the earmark process. But a lot of what we are seeing in both Infrastructure Investment Act, and then the Infrastructure, or excuse me, the Inflation Reduction Act, is new programs for energy efficiency, so installations of energy efficiency, you know, capabilities in your buildings, and then also all of your sort of street and road improvement projects, if they have a component that saves miles, you know, miles driven, or helps with congestion, things like that, those are all, that's a lens that the Biden administration is really looking through right now. So, that's what's exciting, too, is if you look at the list of projects, Primacy can, you know, will talk to staff and look at all the pieces and say, okay, you know, this project's 5.6 million, but if you, if we can get a million for it in earmarks, that's where we're going to go for it. Or this is big enough and has all the components to go for a RACE grant, or a PROTECT grant, which has a lot of the sort of environmental pieces to it as well. So, there are multiple discretionary grant programs and processes that we can request hard infrastructure projects for. And then there is also formula dollars have been way boosted up. And at the state, the state of Minnesota, has received federal funds from, and working through Federal Highway Administration, those funds for MINDOT and projects that are in the city that are MINDOT-led or managed, you know, that money has been boosted up, too. So, we can look and say, this would really be, makes sense for you to go the state angle, partner with MINDOT here, because this funding stream has really been plussed up. So, without looking at the individual projects, but working backwards, size of the project matter and cost of the project matters, in terms of where you're going to look in Infrastructure Investment, or, you know, Inflation Reduction Act. And then, if it is a small enough project for earmarks, that's where it gets exciting, because it can, most of the 12 bills, so Energy and Water, Interior, Transportation and HUD, even Financial Services, they're all earmarked. So, you can be a little bit more outside the box, rather than just, you know, a street interchange, or wastewater treatment, which those are really great projects to put forward and put forward in that process. But there's sort of a more expansive, you know, because sort of categories in the earmarking
Additional questions, council? Very good. Well, thank you. Thanks for making the trip here, and thanks for all your work. And I know you do a lot of work in DC on behalf of Bloomington, and I know that if the council doesn't know, Primacy was a great advocate for the city, as we were deep in the Expo. And so, they did outstanding work, and thank you for that. And if you could extend your thanks to the rest of your staff as well, and tell them we look forward to seeing them soon.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and have a wonderful rest of your evening. And we'll see you soon, I hope.
Moving on, council, to item three on our agenda, that's the consent business. Councilmember Lohman has our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. I'll make one last call for any holds. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move 3.1 through 3.11.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to item four, our hearing's resolutions and ordinances. And our first item tonight is a resolution. Item 4.1 is a resolution providing preliminary approval to the issuance of revenue bonds for the benefit of SRPB Strategic Housing LLC with respect to a multifamily housing development. And that's a mouthful, and I'm sure Lori Economy Scholder, our CFO here in Bloomington, is going to explain this to us. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you again, is the resolution for the preliminary approval. This would be a conduit bond issue, and we are looking, this is the 700 American Project. And this is for 128-unit affordable senior multifamily building with 1,500 square feet of commercial space. The developer, Shaffer Richardson, was selected by an RFE process in late '22. The project is a development entitled project, and was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on November 16th. The city council can consider approval of the land use entitlements on December 18th, when this project comes back. And the project was recently recommended for funding from the Metropolitan Council's Livable Communities Demonstration Account Grant for 1.1,790, yeah, 1,790,000, which is expected to be approved by Metropolitan Council on December 13th. Julie Eddington is with us, our bond attorney, and she will be the conduit bond attorney for this deal. My general understanding of the process is, once we give the preliminary approval, or council gives the preliminary approval for this, they will submit a application to the state to get bonding authority. And depending on where they're at in the mixture of all the other applications, they may get authorization in January, and they may have to wait to the next round in midsummer. So, this is just their preliminary process, and we would be acting as the conduit bond issuer for them, for this state bonding. And as all with conduit bonds, this is not an obligation of the city of Bloomington.
Good, thank you, I appreciate that. So, council, this is 700 American Boulevard. I think when we approved this, when we first talked about this, we talked about the variety of funding sources that they would be working toward, and this is one of those funding sources that they're trying to work their way through at this time. Any questions, council? Comments at all? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, just for clarification, this is not the final approval, this is the approval of the request, and then it'll come back for final approval, is that generally correct?
Our bond attorney just noted yes.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. And that we are not financially obligated, does that include if, for some reason, they defaulted, we still would not be obligated?
On a conduit bond through the state, we would not be part of any default. The city is exempt from all of that.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Nelson? Any additional questions, council? As I said, council, this is a resolution, and so I'd be looking for a motion to adopt this resolution. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'll move a resolution approving the 2024, pardon me, I'm the wrong one here, let me try that. I'll move to approve a resolution providing preliminary approval to the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes for the benefit of SRPB Strategic Housing LLC.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to approve a resolution providing the preliminary approval of the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you so much. We'll move on to item 4.2, and Ms. Economy Scholder will stay with us. This is a resolution regarding proposed changes to our fees and charges schedule. We will have a public comment opportunity for this. Ms. Economy Scholder?
Yes, as, waiting for the presentation to pull up, I just have a few slides for you. In January 2000, Appendix B is what we've created through our fees and service charge schedules. There's an Appendix A through the ordinance, Appendix B, and Appendix C. These are the Appendix B pieces of that, for fees for services and charges adopted by resolution to be incorporated in the published city code. Shortly before you will be an ordinance one for a fee for utilities, but for now, this is the fee scheduled by resolution. Staff recommends approval of the resolution with all the proposed fees and changes in the packet, and posted before you is numerous lines of fee changes, majority have been, yeah, let's see, most of the fees are due in the Center for the Arts Youth Programs. There's an animal shelter piece that aligns with our neighboring communities, and it really aligns well with the costs to maintain the animal in the, the animal shelter for the period of time that they're normally there. And that went up to $75. And then, we're looking for some public comment on that, and that's all I have, that and the motion.
Very good. Council, any questions of Ms. Economy Scholder? Councilmember Lohman?
I'll ask the same questions I typically ask every time. When we look at these fees, and in terms of how we, you know, either increase or decrease the fees, what is kind of, how does the staff go about doing that, would be kind of my first question? What's kind of the, you know, the policy, or decision-making process in which to do that? And then the secondary piece, when we look at business impact and around equity pieces, have, how did you deal with those, those types of things?
So, in regards to the equity piece, I, majority of these have been in process for many, many years, these rates. So, as we look to increase and change them, we look at inflation rates, we look at also the costs to operate that procedure, or that program, and then seeing where we can do that, and we also look at comparisons with other communities to see that we are in alignment, or if our costs are greater than our communities, we will look to find, dig deeper into why those costs are there. So, we want to be comparable with our cities, we also want to be fair and reasonable on what we're asking our residents to pay for different programs, or businesses as they're coming forward to engage with us.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Three probably very quick questions. Most of the increases were modest, which on one hand is good. My question about that, though, is, I mean, we've seen significant inflation, we're seeing that in our other budgets, why are our fees not reflecting those same cost increases?
Again, I would, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, we would look to see what we can afford and what the programs can sustain. Majority of our park and rec programs do receive some tax levy support.
Second question, very specifically to communications, I saw that there were no fee changes, and this gets back to the budget question again, that, you know, we have challenges with our communications budget because of our fees that we collect from the, whatever it's called, I forget the name of it now, but, and I noted that we didn't, we haven't increased those since 2019, some of them go back to like 20, or 2006. At what point do we start to look at those fees, given the budget challenges of that fund?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, the fees that you're describing, that our revenues for our Communications Division come from the franchise fee, the cable franchise fee. Those are described in the franchise that we have with Comcast, and they are fixed for the term of that contract. So, the next opening for the franchise, I believe, is coming due in 2026, if my memory serves, and we will actually reach out and try to commence negotiation with them as early as 2024, which is the process we normally use, it's a 10-year contract, and often there are many issues that take a fair amount of time to work through in addition to requiring some study. And I'd say that this next franchise is going to be very complicated in terms of negotiating rates and understanding the capital issues and many other things in light of where we're at today.
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I would also add, those items that were back in 2006, and even tend to be the media of people wanting to buy a DVD or a CD of events from us, and, you know, and generally, we post a lot of the videos and stuff now right on YouTube. So, people can download from YouTube and watch it on YouTube without having to purchase a CD or a DVD from us for that information.
And just for a point of clarification, I know they're funded by franchise fees, but I don't think these are the franchise fees that we're looking at here. And, you know, I look at like an individual membership for the communication, BCAT, $50, it's been $50 since 2004, you know, and I guess that's my question, is the fees that we can control, at what point do we look at that if it's been nearly two decades and it hasn't changed?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, that's a good question, and I think this one has more to do with what Ms. Economy Scholder was referencing, like with our park and recreation programs, right, where there's only so much that a participant is willing to pay, so we have to stay in lockstep with what we think the market is. Those types of things that you're looking at just don't have a significant amount of usership, right? And so, I think the sense has been, we're not going to get blood from a turnip, as it were, and so, continuing to increase rates there is not going to help us attract more users.
So, we probably lose more members than we gain in additional fees.
Yep.
Price elasticity of demand. My last question is, what is winter snow softball? Because it sounds fascinating, and it was new.
Allison Warren just happens to be sitting here? Here we go.
Mayor and councilmembers, snow softball is exactly what it sounds like, playing snowball in the snow. A number of our other communities around have tried it out, and so, we thought we'd give it a shot this winter as well. So, we'll let you know if it runs, and you can come check it out.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So, I see a couple of new fees under the section, the Bloomington Ice Garden section, so high school game fee, cleaning fee, that I'm just wondering, what are those? I guess I don't really understand, like, are those, are the cleaning fees associated with the high school games and the cleaning fees there?
Ms. Catherine, good evening.
Councilmember Carter, thank you very much. Could you tell me again what the specific question about a cleaning fee?
Yeah, so, under the Bloomington Ice Garden, there are some brand-new fees, and one of them is a high school game event fee, and then there's a cleaning fee and a cleaning fee for all three sheets. And I guess I'm just, I wasn't sure if the cleaning fees were associated with the high school game event fee, or if they were just separate. So, if there was a big tournament hosted by, you know, the local hockey association, would they then have cleaning fees associated with the rental of all three sheets for a tournament? Is that how I'm taking, am I taking that the right way?
Mr. Sable, do we have Lenny?
Yes, ma'am.
Lenny, did you hear the question from Councilmember Carter?
I did, Mayor, Councilmember Carter. We added these fees in for, they're separate, so the cleaning fee isn't directly related to the high school game fees, special event fees, so major tournaments, other major events at the rink that require additional, like, much more extensive cleanup and much more trash generation, is something that we've started looking at adding in. So, this last weekend, when we had a tournament renting all three sheets of ice, and had staff in the building significantly later than they normally would be, cleaning up after a large event, it's one way to recoup some of those costs associated with that, between the staff time and then just the extra amount of trash that goes into the dumpster.
Okay, so, it's more for those bigger- Okay, so it's more for those bigger events. It wouldn't pertain to say, I know, like, the local elementary schools will do a field trip to big. Like, would that apply to them as well?
No, these would be just applied for our major tournament weekends or major competition weekends, where they're renting multiple sheets of ice. So it might be one sheet of ice for the entire weekend, or it might be multiple sheets. You know, if they rent all three sheets, we give them a little bit of a discount, economy of scale per se. Like this last weekend, we had the Gobbler. They had all three sheets rented all day Friday, all day Saturday, and Sunday morning. In that case, they would have paid the, the three-sheet fee each day for the cleanup.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you. So my next question is actually, I think it's a Parks and Rec question. So can you just remind us, there's recognized user groups, which I see most of those fees did not change, and then there's private groups, which those increased. So are the recognized user groups, like some of the youth athletic associations and?
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, the recognized groups are the local athletic associations, and they do now pay a per-player fee instead of a per-field fee that are listed there.
Did that increase?
It did increase to thirteen dollars per player. This year, it was eleven the last two years, and it'll be fifteen starting in 2026, and all of the associations are aware of those upcoming changes.
Okay, so that's the R-B-Y-A-O?
Correct. Recognized Bloomington Youth Athletic Association. We love our acronym.
Okay, I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then my last question would be related to the between fifteen to twenty percent increase in camp program fees. And I will say, years ago, I was shocked by how low, how low the cost was for Camp Cota. So I'm not necessarily against that change. I think we're still probably lower than, like, YMCA camp programs. But I guess I would be interested in just hearing, you know, what is going into that increase, just so that those in the public can hear why they'll be seeing those increases as well.
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, along with that, like Lori said, we do compare with other cities and other programs around the area, and we are still extremely low and comparable to others, especially for a week-long program that includes an overnight. It is extremely tax subsidized at the moment, and so we are using cost recovery and many business plans to identify where we can increase fees, and that would be one of them. Also recognizing that we do have our fee assistance program that is still available and changing for this upcoming 2024 season to allow for additional fee assistance if necessary.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the fee assistance program, because I knew there was one in place. So that's all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter. Appreciate the responses from Ms. Warren, and especially the emphasis on the cost recovery concept, because you might recall this when we went through our Park System Master Planning, that notion of cost recovery was something that we talked about. And as we're looking at our budgets going forward, we're going to be coming back to the council and having conversation about what your expectations are going to be. Because to your point, Councilmember Carter, I think that many of our users and customers have been used to a certain level of charging for, for our programming. And as Ms. Warren mentioned, they're, they're very heavily tax subsidized, right? And so trying to make sure that we get the balance right on what it is that we're charging folks and, and what the council's expectations are going to be, will be an upcoming discussion.
Counsel, anything additional? Item four point two, any questions? Very good. As I said, this is a public comment opportunity. And I will open this public comment opportunity now. Is anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item four point two, a resolution regarding the proposed changes to fees and charges No one coming forward? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone this evening?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I do have a caller with the prefix six one seven five one nine. You are now unmuted. Caller six one seven five one nine, you are now live.
All right. Sounds like we don't have anyone on the line. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a Michael Dardis on the line.
Anyone else, Mr. Sable?
The mayor, that's it.
Last call for anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak to item four point two this evening? Counsel, I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comment period, public comment opportunity for item four point two. Counsel, any additional discussion on item four point two, or if not, I would look for action on item four point two. Councilmember Martin?
Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion.
Just one last call for any comments or any questions, counsel? All right, Councilmember Martin?
I will move that we adopt a resolution approving the 2024 schedule of fees and charges, Appendix B fees and service charges schedule adopted by resolution.
Second, motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt a resolution approving the 2024 schedule of fees and charges. No further council discussion on this? All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Next up is our item four point three. This one is a public hearing, and this is regarding an ordinance to increase water and wastewater rates. All right, Carlson, our deputy finance officer is here this evening, and I think actually you get the next four items as well.
Yes.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the public hearing for the 2024 utility rates and corresponding budgets. And this information we are presenting tonight is similar to what was presented at the October sixteenth and November thirteenth council meetings. However, I am going to run through it again quickly, since this is the official public hearing. And I want to make sure that the members of the public who are watching tonight have this information, in case they didn't see the previous council meetings where it was discussed. I will be presenting the information this evening, but we do have the utility fund managers here tonight to answer questions, including utility superintendent Scott Anderson and Water Resources Manager Brian Greedle that are in the council chambers, and also solid waste program coordinator Laura Horner. She is online, and so, as I said, they're all available for answering questions. So the four utility funds are the Water Fund, the Wastewater Fund, the Stormwater Fund, and the Solid Waste Fund. The Water Utility provides high-quality drinking water, and this fund accounts for the costs related to the operation, maintenance, and renewal of the water system. This graph here is the one that demonstrates that Bloomington continues to provide softened water at a relatively low cost. The blue bars represent softened water, the red bars represent unsoftened water, and the white bar here represents home softened water costs. So Bloomington has the second to the lowest softened water rate compared to these other cities. And for 2024, we are recommending that the rates for both Tier One and Tier Two be increased by seven and a half percent. The Tier Two rate goes into effect over twelve thousand gallons for a bimonthly period, so a two-month period. And then this is the Water Fund long-term budget model. With that seven and a half proposed rate increase, you can see that on the budget model that the working capital balance is in the green, which is our goal. With this proposed rate increase, for 2024, revenue is projected to be twenty-one point seven million dollars, and expenses are slightly higher than that at twenty-one point nine million dollars with about four point one in capital. And that will bring down the working capital balance by around two hundred thousand, but in 2024, but keep it in line with the goal for this fund. Next, for the wastewater utility. The wastewater utility provides city sewer services, and this fund also accounts for the costs of operations, maintenance, and renewal for the wastewater system. And as discussed before, a significant expense in this fund are the wastewater sewer collection system charges from, from the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services. And in 2024, that'll be nine million dollars. This slide shows that Bloomington's wastewater rates are among the lowest in our peer cities. And for 2024, we're recommending that the rates are increased by four percent. So going from five dollars and twenty-nine cents to five dollars and fifty cents per one thousand And then next, here's the wastewater long-term budget model with that four percent increase that we're proposing. And with that, the forecasted revenues would be at fourteen point nine million and expenses at fifteen point two million, bringing down the working capital balance by about two hundred and forty-eight thousand in 2024, but still remaining pretty much in the goal until 2027. The next utility fund is the stormwater, and that manages excess rainwater to prevent flooding and improve water quality before it enters our ponds, lakes, and rivers. This graph shows an annual family stormwater rate for Bloomington residents compared to surrounding communities. And on this one, Brooklyn Center is at the lowest there at seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents per year. Minneapolis here is the highest at two hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents per year. And then Bloomington here is in the upper middle. And so we're currently at a hundred and five dollars per year for 2023, which is shown in blue there. And then the proposed in orange is at a hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-two cents per year, shown in the orange on this graph. We're proposing that the rates increase by seven percent. The stormwater rates are determined by land use category at a per-acre rate. So as I said, we're proposing a seven percent increase. Each single-family residential lot is considered to be one-third of an acre. So the proposed 2024 rate at that one-third acre would be nine dollars and thirty-six cents per month. Here's the stormwater long-term budget model with a seven percent increase, which would have revenues forecasted at eight point two million dollars and expenses at nine point six million dollars, which will bring down the working capital balance by around one point four million, a little bit under in 2024. So the working capital balance dips down to eighty percent of the goal for the fund in 2026, but it's projected to go back up to ninety percent in 2027. And then the last utility fund tonight is the solid waste utility, which provides service for garbage, recycling, organics, yard waste, bulky item management, storm cleanups, and environmental health abaintments. So in 2024 budget, the forestry, forestry activity for diseased tree removal is moving from this fund to the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, now that park maintenance has moved from the Public Works Department to the Parks and Recreation Department. Here are the proposed 2024 garbage rates that are made up of four different components. So the collection rate that's set in our contract with the Garbage Haulers Consortium is a part of the rate driver. Also, the disposal rate that's set in the contract with the consortium. There's an administrative fee that covers billing, customer service, education, and contract administration. And then there is kind of a pass-through fee for the state solid waste tax and the county fee. Next, the recycling rates, proposing a three percent increase, and the rate drivers consist of a price escalator, again, set in the contract for collection, as well as a recycling commodity adjustment offset that is established annually. And that is determined by the published commodity indices and the composition of what our residents are recycling. The organics recycling service began last year in March 2022, and like regular recycling, the rate is paid by all residents who have city garbage and recycling service. The rate is increasing by seventeen cents per month, so it's going from five dollars and fifty cents to five dollars and sixty-seven cents. And residents do need to sign up for a cart, and currently, just under twenty-eight percent of households are participating. And then the bulky item management rate, that was reduced by sixteen percent last year after some program changes. And the program changes included going from an every-year curbside cleanup to an every-other-year curbside cleanup. So 2024, there is going to be a curbside cleanup. There's also now a community drop-off event, community swap events, and a portion of this rate does go towards cleanup if there's a major storm event. This is the solid waste long-term budget model with, on average, four point six-six percent increase for the garbage and three percent for recycling and organics increases. 2024 has revenues at ten point two million dollars and expenses budgeted at ten point nine million. The 2024 budget has one point four million budgeted for the curbside cleanup, as I talked about. And the working capital does dip down to seventy-four percent of the goal in 26, but it's projected to go back up to about eighty-seven percent in This next slide is just showing some key rate drivers for utility rates. So for the water, wastewater, and stormwater utilities, the key rate drivers are the increases in supplies, contract services, materials, costs that we're seeing there, and project costs for asset renewal and replacement. The wastewater utility also has that significant charge from the Met Council Environmental Services. And for solid waste, the drivers include the collection price escalator that's set in that contract with the haulers, the disposal costs from PERC admin charges, and then those pass-through taxes for Minnesota State Solid Waste and Hennepin County. And as we said before, it's not just the operations, maintenance of these utilities. Some of the big expenses for the water, wastewater, and stormwater are the planned asset renewal of infrastructure. So just some, just some of the examples of planned utility projects include the one point three million dollars to replace one of the city's six drinking water supply wells, nine million dollars planned for construction necessary for dewatering secondary solids at the water treatment plant, six million dollars for AMI or advanced metering infrastructure. And those are all for the Water Fund, and then two point seven million for a Penn Lake stormwater project, which had been listed by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as impaired for nutrients. And this work was identified as part of the Penn Lake hydrology study completed last year. So here is a recap of the proposed rate increases for tonight's public hearing. So water at a seven and a half percent, wastewater at four percent, stormwater at seven percent, an average of the small, medium, and large cards for garbage at four point six-six percent, recycling three percent, bulky item management three percent, and organics three percent. And then this is the recap with all the utility rates combined, just to show a total increase based on average usage. As a reminder, utility bills are sent once every eight weeks, so they're sent out bimonthly. So for, let's say, small garbage use, minimal water use, or small garbage can, minimal water use would be an increase of five dollars and fifty cents for a two-month period, or thirty-three dollars per year. A medium garbage can and medium water use would be an increase of ten dollars and five cents for that two-month period, or sixty dollars and thirty cents for the year. And then a large garbage and larger water use would be an increase of nineteen dollars and fifty-four cents for a two-month period, or a hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents a year. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Counsel, questions?
Councilmember Lohman? So when we look across many of the budgets that were there, we saw a number of the working capital percentages, and this is more so for a question for those folks who are watching at home. And they see this working capital that's over a hundred percent in green. You know, some may look at that and say, you know, there's several of these examples that are, they may say, hey, well, gosh, you know, we're, you know, we're getting taxed. Is this a place where the, the council could reduce that amount and get it down to a hundred percent, and then give those dollars back to the, to the residents? And I wanted to just see, just in general, you know, what that means when we have some of those capital of those capital expenses that are over a hundred percent.
So Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Lowen, you can see we're showing a portion of these long-term budget models. It's already getting kind of small going out to twenty twenty-seven, but in all of those, you can see what we're projecting out is for them not to be over a hundred percent of the goal, but for them to sometimes even dip down to under eighty percent. And so once it gets below the ninety percent of that goal, it gets, it shows yellow, just as a color indicator, kind of caution. And then once it gets below the eighty percent, it goes down to, it turns red automatically. So it's just showing that what we have, what we are planning to have available for future capital projects might not be there. We might need to find a different funding source than the actual money in these funds.
So really, these, these short-term kind of things we're looking at, kind of ignore the long-term kind of model that we have out there to some degree when you kind of see that. I mean, it's there, but you know, when we have those short pieces there, it sometimes can get a little bit lost in there. I do know that when folks are just tuning in, you know, they haven't watched any of this stuff, and they're just seeing this for the first time, there may be some concern with that, but I just wanted to just kind of, I know we had a quite lengthy conversation about that before, but I wanted to just bring that forward as folks are looking at that as we kind of move towards the end of the, the pieces. And then I also wanted to just mention more commentary that, you know, looking at the garbage rates and that type of thing, that there is a study that the council and the staff are looking to try to do, to try to see if there's a way that we can make some changes with, with those rates. So that's all I had to comment or question.
Thank you, councilmember. And to your point regarding the capital fund balances, yes, we did have the discussion, and we, one of the directions we gave to the, to the staff was that we're going to continue that kind of conversation in depth and see where the council is comfortable in terms of, not just where they are in terms of the red, green, yellow, but where they are set at just in general. Are, is it an appropriate level? And if not, what is the more appropriate level for the, the goals that we're trying to accomplish and all the goals that we're trying to accomplish, to have that working capital balance, but at the same time trying to balance the, the, the tax revenue that is collected to keep those balances where they are? Counsel, any other questions or comments on Ms. Carlson's presentation? Hearing none. We have, item four point three is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing now. This is a public hearing on the ordinance to increase water and wastewater rates. Item four point three, anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point three this evening? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the line?
Thank you, Mayor. No one on the line.
Last call for anyone in the chambers to come forward, speak on item four point three. Counsel, no one on the line. I see no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item four point three. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Counsel, any discussion on our water and wastewater rates? I think this is, I mean, we, we see example after example in what we do and, and the cost of things, but the, the cost of what we have for our water and wastewater is literally the cost of the water and the wastewater. It's the, the operations of it, it's the deliverables, it's the infrastructure. I, I hope there's the understanding from the general public, this isn't, this isn't a, a city moneymaker, this isn't, you know, a cash grab, this is simply a city service that is paying for itself. And, and that's the case with, with a good chunk, a good chunk of what we're talking about, but certainly within this department or within this specific category as well. So with that being said, counsel, if nobody has any other questions, I'd look for action on item four point three. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Bloomington City Code to increase water and wastewater rates as indicated in Chapter eleven.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Lowman, to adopt the ordinance amending Appendix A of the Bloomington City Code, increasing water and wastewater rates. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Muah, summary publication.
I'd move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of ordinance to increase water and wastewater rates.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Martin, for summary publication on item four point three. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. We heard the presentation, and we'll move right on to the public hearing for item four point four, which is the public hearing for the ordinance to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item four point four? Mr. Sable, anyone on the line?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one new on the line.
Last chance for anyone in the chambers. Counsel, no one coming forward for item four point four, the public hearing on the ordinance to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Muah, to close the public hearing on item four point four. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, any discussions on item four point four? Solid waste and refuse collection fees? Hearing, no questions? I'd look for action on item four point four. Counsel, councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Bloomington City Code to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees indicated in Chapter eleven.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Lowman, to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Bloomington City Code to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees. No further counsel discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Muah, summary publication.
I'm going to move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of an ordinance to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Carter, for summary publication on item four point four. No further counsel discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And item four point five, the resolution to change stormwater charges. This is not a public hearing. We're back to our resolution as we bounce around here between our resolutions and our public hearings. This would be a resolution. Counsel, is there any further discussion on item four point five regarding the change in stormwater charges? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a really brief comment, kind of adding to what you had said early, earlier, related to all of these charges, actually, or all of these items on the agenda that we are currently voting on. I just want to remind those in the public who might be watching that we have had hours and hours and hours of conversation about these increases. And so for those who are curious about what that discussion looked like, I really highly encourage them to go back and watch previous council meetings and discussions because, again, hours and hours of discussion around these, and it's not just, you know, I know during the campaign season, there was the, you know, everything's a seven oh or six oh vote, and oftentimes, it's because we spend so much time in these conversations. And so just wanted to say that out loud so that people don't think we're just up here approving without discussion.
I appreciate that comment, councilmember Carter. And please let me know if I move quickly, too quickly through some of these things, but by the same token, we literally, I think, are on our fourth discussion on a lot of these items, and there is plenty of tape to back that up. And so, and, and good discussion, but we are to this point because of that discussion that we had, and the, the good discussions that we had between council, with staff, and, and this is where we, as I said, this is where we ended up. So thank you for that. Counsel, any further discussion on item four point five, the resolution to change stormwater charges? Hearing none, I'd look for action on this resolution. Councilmember Carter.
I move to adopt a resolution establishing a basic system rate for the purpose of calculating stormwater drainage charges pursuant to Section sixteen point one-five of the City Code.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Carter, second by councilmember Muah, adopting the resolution of establishing a basic system rate for the purpose of calculating stormwater drainage charges. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item four point six is the resolution approving the twenty twenty-four utility fund budgets. Ms. Carlson, anything additional to add to this?
Mayor, councilmembers, nothing additional to add, other than just a plug for the, on the city's website, there's a city budget page, so it's right off the, the landing page, the homepage for the city, so you can get the city budget. And we have queued up all of the council meetings, all of the discussions queued right up to that point, so you don't have to go searching with past council meetings, and you can see all of the presentations and all of the discussion there.
Good. Thank you for making that clear for everyone. Counsel, any further discussion on the twenty twenty-four utility fund budgets? If not, again, this is a resolution. I'd look for action on this resolution on item four point six. Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-four water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste enterprise fund budgets.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Martin, second by councilmember Carter, adopting the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste enterprise fund budgets. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Carlson. Thanks for your work over the past few months as we pulled all this together. Thanks for your work all summer, basically. I know you were the, the face of Bloomington in a lot of different events and taking in the community engagement and the feedback, and, and appreciate your willingness to do that and the ability that you do that, that you're able to do that and do it as effectively as you do, because I think you're a, a great representative for the city in so many different ways, but certainly as the face of the city, talking about sometimes difficult issues. And I, I know you do a fantastic job with that, so thank you. Thanks. Well done.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Moving on to item four point seven, our last item under four, our hearings resolutions, our, excuse me, our, our hearings, ordinances, and, or resolutions, thank you, I knew I had it right, I just had it in the wrong order, is item four point seven. This is also a public hearing, and this is an ordinance regarding our Human Rights Commission. And Ms. Manderscheid is going to lead us through this, and I think this is a kind of an update and a cleanup to, to bring us up to speed and up to date in a lot of our language within our Human Rights Commission ordinance. Ms. Manderscheid.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and members. I am presenting tonight, although this is the result of several people's work, a mayor, Malick, who you've met earlier this year, Peter Zuniga, Faith Jackson, Eric Holthouse, Diane Kirby, members of the Human Rights Commission. A lot of people have been engaged, Eric Coleman, in the process of reviewing these, the document before you tonight, as well as the city's fair housing policy that you acted on earlier tonight. Essentially, it's cleanup. Back in October, this body acted to approve some updated bylaws for the Human Rights Commission. This ordinance aligns the bylaw, or excuse me, aligns the ordinance with those bylaw updates, which by and large were to update the document to reflect what's actually happening, both with state law changes, state law words, department names, that sort of thing, as well as what sort of technically happens. All of our commissions, with the exception of the HRA, the Planning Commission, and the Port Authority, all of the other ones are advisor, are advisory to the city council. And so that was one of the cleanup things that you saw happen. The other thing that is later on in the ordinance relates to contract, contractor compliance. And we made some edits to that section of the code in, to clean up the process and shorten it. The process that was there was quite long, and we were of the opinion that we wouldn't want to wait and go through weeks and weeks of hearings and whatnot when we knew that we could take action much more quickly to address a human rights violation. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that there is a reference to a nineteen seventy resolution with a school district, and we did some research on that and concluded that we did not want to wait to update this ordinance until we had a concurrent conversation with the school district. We anticipate that there will be meetings such as that in twenty twenty-four, and this would be placed on that agenda for further discussion. I suspect that might be time to dust it off, but I could be wrong, too. So I bring this before you for your consideration tonight. There's two actions. One is the ordinance, and then the other one is the summary publication resolution. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Counsel, questions on this? Councilmember Lowman.
You know, I did ask a question earlier, and I didn't really get a response. I mean, I, I guess my question I asked with regards to this ordinance change was with the process itself, if we actually did the process, would there be, you know, any liability risk if there was an error or an issue with respect to conducting that process, if we actually were doing that, that process?
Mayor members.
Ms. Manderscheid, council, councilmember, can you define the process that you're describing here?
Well, the, the process that, that I assume that we're eliminating here was the, the ability of the Human Rights Commission to go out and advocate for folks, or, or, or work through issues, if I understand, what we're getting rid of here.
Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, just a point of clarification. Councilmember Lowman, are you referring to the edit to what is subparagraph C in the top, I guess it would be at the top of page two of the ordinance? Or are you referring to the changes related to contractor compliance?
I think it's C is what I'm looking for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's C. I'm trying to get there.
Sure. So this is on the top of page two of the ordinance. We removed the reference to attempting to conciliate within its authority, and instead made a change to make it more clear that what really happens from a practical perspective is that we're referring those grievances to the state, essentially, or the federal law enforcement, depending upon what it is. And so if there is something that needs action right away, we would want to review, excuse me, refer those items immediately to the state Human Rights Department or to the federal law enforcement or other, you know, relevant agency. This is a change that, as I understand it, is consistent with the bylaw change.
Yeah, great. My question, though, is the liability piece. That's what I'm not getting. I get the process change, but was there with that process, if we were to execute it the way it's written?
Answer of the question, because as, as much as I understand it, the history, it's never been used. So if you're, I could hypothesize as to possible.
Let me ask it this way. In other cities that actually do use that, is there any liability for the city if they do that?
Mayor members, we reviewed the ordinances of lots of other cities that have human rights commissions. Several cities have gotten rid of them altogether, or they have enlarged their scope of authority to all civil rights, and for example, Minneapolis is much larger in its scope. It is not, I, I do not know about liability of other human rights commissions.
That's fair. That's all I know. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Counsel, additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Item four point seven is a public hearing, and I will open this public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding the Human Rights Commission ordinance. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point seven this evening? No one coming forward? Mr. Sable?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one on the line.
Last call for anyone in the chambers to speak to item four point seven. Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point seven.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Martin, to close the public hearing on item four point seven. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, closing the public hearing on item four point seven. Counsel, any additional discussion on this? If not, I would look for action.
Mayor, be happy to.
Counselmember Lowman.
Happy to make that motion. I would move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter two of the City Code related to the Human Rights Commission and the contract compliance.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Martin, to approve the ordinance amending Chapter two of the City Code related to the Human Rights Commission and contract compliance. Any further counsel discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Lowman, summary publication.
Mayor, I would move to approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending Chapter two of the City Code related to the Human Rights Commission and contract compliance.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Martin, for summary publication on item four point seven. No further counsel discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Thanks for that cleanup. Appreciate it. And that wraps up item four on our agenda. We will move on to item five, our organizational business. And our first informational item is item five point one. This is regarding our business assistance program, our business continuum, our site and facade improvement program, our business retention program, a partridge in a pear tree, and I think we've got a good portion of our Port Authority here to talk about this. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Holly Masek. I am the Port Authority Administrator, and I'm here with my colleagues, Meredith Vanderwig. Masick. I am the Port Authority Administrator, and I'm here with my colleagues, Meredith Vanderwig, Barb Wolf and Nick Johnson. The Port Authority recently underwent significant organizational changes, expanding both its geography and the types of services offered. The Port Authority, which previously worked exclusively within South Loop, now offers economic development services citywide. The port has now, has also added business assistance programs primarily focused on small businesses to the development and place making services already offered by our team. A new staff person, position was created to serve as a liaison to the business community, and Barb Wolf joined the Port Authority in this role in 2023. The city of Bloomington began focusing more attention on small business support during COVID-19. As the city began looking for efficient ways to distribute federal relief funding, it found that it did not have an easy way to reach this important group of constituents. From there, the city began creating programs to develop relationships with and support small businesses, including developing the facade improvement and retention programs that you will hear about this evening. Small and large businesses play a vital role in supporting Bloomington's economy, as you all well know. They provide employment, contribute to the tax base and support each other with local goods and services. In addition, small independent businesses contribute to Bloomington's uniqueness and sense of place. Can I get the next slide, please? I have the clicker. As the team in the Port Authority expands business assistance programs targeted at smaller businesses, it is important to understand that these programs will join a larger suite of services meant to assist Bloomington's businesses at every stage, from startup to expansion. This evening, I present to you Bloomington's Business Continuum, which shows the range of services available to businesses of all sizes that operate within the city. The Business Continuum is meant to be a living document which will grow and adjust as our community changes. The document shows business stages from startup to expansion and breaks down the programs we offer into three categories: information, connection and promotion, grants, loans and assistance, and technical assistance and consultation. Programs may grow out of different city departments and teams, and you will hear about some today, or internal and external collaborations, but the Port Authority will work to ensure that they are cohesive, understood by our city colleagues and promoted to our business community. It is also important to understand that the Port Authority is one entity in a wider regional team that supports Bloomington's economic development. External partners provide technical assistance and consultation to our businesses, help amplify our message to their own audiences, offer loans and grants and collaborate on regional business attraction efforts. So, in greater detail, what we have here, and I apologize, this one is dense, but looking from small businesses to large businesses across the top, and small businesses to us are technically fewer than 500 employees, but in Bloomington, we're primarily focused on employees with fewer than 50. We're working with them from left to right, from ideation and startup to early stage and launching, to operating, growing and expanding and relocating here. You'll see down the left, Bloomington is providing a number of services, and then we lean on our partners for others. In the top band of Bloomington services, we have information, connection and promotion. We have a program called Welcoming Wednesdays, which invites our business community to come into City Hall and speak to consultants of ours. We're working on developing a small business center, which should open next year. We have a growing business resource newsletter where we can share resources for the business community. Barb Wolf works on assisting businesses with permitting process that can be complicated and intimidating to a new business. We do often, across community development, talk to different businesses about site selection and broker referral as they look for specific sites. Our communications team works closely with us to promote businesses in the community. We are proactively performing business retention visits now, going to visit both small businesses as well as large businesses. We offer business networking with a number of partners, including our regional chamber. Hatch Bloomington, you heard about recently, which is a new competitive pitch program. And then we have the Workforce Bloomington Steering Committee led by our mayor, which includes educational institutions and large businesses. Moving down to grants, loans and incentives, you'll hear about the site and facade improvement program tonight, as well as the retention program. We have SAC credit and deferral that was developed during COVID. We have a business subsidy program. We help many large businesses with state, county and federal grants. And then we have financial programs like tax increment financing that we use as well. And finally, we do lean a lot on partners for technical assistance and consultation. There are so many resources available in the area. And so, two popular ones that we use are Open to Business, which is run by the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers, and Elevate Hennepin by Hennepin County that refers to free consulting. And then Hennepin also runs several cohort programs for new and expanding businesses. And Bloomington and Brooklyn Parker actually pilot locations for the newest one, which is CEO Start, and you'll hear more about that in the end of this year and the beginning of next year. And with that, I will turn it over to Nick Johnson, senior planner, to talk about our site and facade improvement programs.
Thanks, Holly. To the mayor members, so happy to present to you informational update about our proposed site and facade improvement program. So, first of all, just why pursue a program like this? You may often hear about them more in kind of historic downtowns or other areas that are trying to achieve kind of a uniform aesthetic. But the more we talked about it at CD REIT, which is where these discussions really launched between, as a collaboration between planning staff and port staff, was that there really is kind of a missing link of programming that you can offer small businesses, many of which are buyback and women-owned tools in order to improve their sites. And historically, Bloomington has done some larger redevelopment projects of some commercial nodes, but what we felt was kind of missing is kind of that lower hanging fruit tool or that smaller tool in order to improve sites from their current condition without the kind of the hardship or some of the difficulty that can result from full redevelopment. So, that's kind of what made us look towards this. And of course, we know that some of our aging commercial nodes have been a longstanding priority of both this council and councils past. So, that's why we look to this program. In terms of purpose, really just straightforward, just to enhance the physical environment and the building aesthetics of commercial nodes in Bloomington. So, I, you know, you can kind of look at some of these key purpose statements on the screen, but really what you're, the key connection is what are the eligible activities? And that's really what the purpose is. It's to improve the vibrancy of these spaces, to create opportunities for activation and more, you know, pedestrian connections, patios, but also just improving the buildings themselves. Just getting to the basics of how it's put together, the minimum grant amount would be a $5,000 grant with a maximum award of $25,000. This would be a one-to-one match. So, part of the, part of the play here is also to incentivize investment and improvement of sites by property owners and tenants. I will note that related to the money, I'm not really the money guy, but the, related to the money, we got some good news that Hennepin County is going to award Bloomington with a $35,000 grant to help launch this program and help build the budget. So, that was exciting news that we got. Barb Wolf was heavily involved in that. Get into the eligible expenses. You know, I'm not going to rattle off the list, but hopefully what we're keying in on is things that we think make a difference in order to improve the vibrancy and aesthetic conditions of some of these sites. And what it's really not intended to do is just do general maintenance. So, I think the staff will have some just general discretion to ensure that it's really kind of furthering that purpose and intent as shown in the policy. So, I mentioned ineligible activities, routine maintenance, parking lot improvements, some of the things that other, you know, properties, which are costly, no doubt, but don't further that purpose. We have been doing some engagements. Certainly, we did the online engagement piece like we typically do, but myself and several other staff have been out door knocking some of these commercial sites. And what we're focused on is the B2 and B4 zone sites. Those are our neighborhood commercial zone sites where all of the eight priority nodes are located, but other commercial properties in Bloomington. And I will say that they were very appreciative and excited just to be talking to city staff about this program, because I think often, as I mentioned, I think the city's efforts have been focused maybe a little bit more on redevelopment in the past. So, they were excited about this. And that's important, too. But they were, they were happy to speak with us. So, I think that we will get some applications. Oops. Yeah, so we did, yeah, I knew it. We did do an REIA on this. We found that there was no unintended negative consequences kind of resulting from this policy. And in fact, supporting small business is also a means to support BIPOC and women-owned businesses in Bloomington. You know, the better these sites feel, the more successful those businesses are going to be in attracting new patrons and new customers. So, we were pleased with that. And then, just in terms of general alignment, of course, if you want to create a remarkable city to live in, then you need to create remarkable places. And we think that this is going to be a tool that helps do that. And then, of course, one of the BTT priorities is equitable economic growth. As I mentioned, we think that this project will help businesses at these priority sites through the administration of this program. So, it's kind of a pilot. The port, I think, is committed to reviewing it on an annual basis to see how effective it is, but this is kind of the kickoff. So, happy to take any questions, but otherwise, I'm going to pass it off to Meredith Vanderwig.
Cool.
Questions at all? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I got a couple of quick questions. How exactly is this funded, other than we got the grant from Hennepin County? Will it be the port levy or other port levy?
Mayor, that's, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct.
Okay. The, two questions I have. In terms of the, this program, how do we ensure that the money goes to the small business for updates? Because I look at a lot of these commercial nodes, and I looked at the one in my district, and, I mean, the economic, or the price, the market value of it's like $2.3 million. This is not necessarily a really small business that owns it, and we're going to be giving them significant amount of money from the levy to help update that, yet there are other parts of this that go towards signage and things like that that would be used by the small businesses that are tenants. How do we ensure that the money goes to the small business and not, frankly, a larger entity, property owner that in all likelihood may not need the money? And I don't begrudge them for being successful and owning property. That's, that's great. I just don't know that our money should be used to incentivize them. So, that's, that's my first question. Then I have one other one.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Nelson, and I welcome port staff to speak to how they'll administrate and administer it eventually. But I think one of the ways you do that is you allow tenants to apply. I mean, they do need to seek property owner. It is the property owner's building. So, you do want to empower them to apply as tenants. That's one way that you do that. Another way is that you do the engagement with tenants as opposed to just mailing it off to property owners and those types of things. So, and you know, Barb, Holly, other port staff who engage with businesses a lot, they're, they're already promoting this as a means to do some of those things. So, I recognize that concern definitely does exist. As far as other eligibility criteria, maybe that's something we have, we've talked about those things, but they always do have a legal component as well.
Yeah.
So, but yes, I think it's how you get the word out and how you, who you encourage to apply and, and some of those things.
Just don't talk to legal. So, my second question is, in some ways, is this counterproductive to some of our other goals? We have talked about and done a lot with commercial neighborhood nodes and have talked about a concept of redevelopment in terms of newer formats where we have the parking lots in the back of them, similar to what has happened at Old Shakopee and France Avenue and some other places. I mean, we did the, you know, Lindale retrofit with that goal in mind. Is incentivizing people to update these spaces counterproductive to redevelopment in the long term?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Nelson, I think you definitely want to keep an eye on that. The one thing I'd say, having worked on, you know, some of these commercial nodes in the past, is that sometimes when it is kind of an all or nothing, you're setting the bar pretty hard, or pretty high to make that project go. Obviously, you need willing participants, either sellers and/or people who want to take that full-blown, that project of that magnitude. And they have, if they have, you know, good occupancy rates, sometimes it's just not going to occur if they're getting good revenue from the building. So, it's not to say that that approach isn't definitely warranted in some locations and would meet other city goals. We just think adding this tool in the toolbox would be beneficial. And there's a lot of properties not in those priority nodes where I think that more significant intervention that you're talking about would also benefit along Lindale and other places. So, yeah.
Councilmember Lowman.
If I can kind of pick up right where Councilmember Nelson left off, because I saw with one of these purposes being that to provide tools and strategies in support of small businesses that are displaced due to redevelopment, did that, is that still a part of this program or did I miss that? Was that the next one? Okay, I'm ahead of myself here. Okay, I'm way ahead of myself. Okay. So, then let me ask my other questions then. Okay. I will. Thank you. So, then, you know, we have these, these, these purposes that we have for this particular program. My question is, what does success look like when, you know, we're said and done and we've, we've invested all this money, you know, in these particular projects? I know that you mentioned that there'd be some evaluations and I have some, that's my, kind of my secondary question is around how we're going to evaluate that. But, you know, as a policymaker, you know, here are the purposes that you've got laid out here. How do I know what success looks like?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Lowman, that's a good question. I mean, it certainly on some, hopefully, the program is going to support projects that look and make these sites function and feel better. So, that's one piece of it. The second piece is certainly you can look, I mean, it's going to take years to figure some of that out, but if the overall performance of some of those multi-tenant spaces improve and just from an occupancy or rent standpoint, certainly our assessing staff, look at those things. That would be another way to evaluate how this project has incentivized some investment. And I thought maybe Councilmember Nelson, you might ask me about just the amount of money. Obviously, construction is very costly right now. How far does $50,000 or $25,000 in terms of the major grant go? But if it's just that little extra added push to kind of get something going at a site, we think that that's really beneficial. So, we're going to measure it just in terms of the amount of projects. If we're actually using these funds on an annual basis and it's making projects go that otherwise would not, and we can talk to people about that, that'll, that'll be the real test. And as I said, they will look at it on an annual basis.
Okay. And then, finally, in terms of the application process, there's renewed scrutiny in the community around people applying for things. Has staff at all looked at what that application process looks like and how, and I'm not necessarily looking for an answer today, but has that been a part of the discussion in terms of, you know, how that application process looks like and, you know, what, and how folks move their way through that process?
Mayor Councilmember Lowman, it has been a discussion internal to staff. We originally started with a very grandiose scoring system and criteria with an open application window with award at the end of the year. But after talking to the Minneapolis Regional Chamber and other entities that kind of administer these types of programs, they impressed upon us that being able to be nimble and fast is actually really important in a lot of these circumstances, because if you can get, if some of these improvements help a business get established, that time window can be eight or six, six or eight weeks of time in order to make something go. So, one thing they impressed upon us is not to do a kind of rigid scoring criteria that all meets or all is decided at either at one or two points of the year. So, that's one thing, an easier application process. That's something we did focus on. So, we did, we went away from the kind of the grandiose scoring criteria.
And I will say, appreciate that, you know, and also think there's some equity components of that, too, that may, but one thing I would want to, want to just as advice is just in terms of being able, that we're able to explain our process and in terms of, I know we, you know, talk about transparency and that kind of thing. And so, the decision-making is very clear in terms of how that's made, and we can kind of, you know, leg that out and make it make sense so that folks don't feel like there's some kind of special advantage or that kind of thing. And I know the staff's going to take care of that. So, again, not looking for, just, I want to make sure I stated that.
No, thank you. I welcome that comment, for sure.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, we almost kept cruising and then we opened up the questions.
It was, I asked for it.
Apologies, this might be kind of a elementary question, I guess, especially when you're talking about code deficiency of sites. Are we anticipating the code deficiencies we're seeing out in the community, I'm picturing, say, kind of a tired strip mall. Are those deficiencies largely the responsibilities of the owner at this point, or are we seeing a lot of deficiencies that would be, say, in individual businesses signage in that larger strip mall? I'm just trying to picture, especially when it comes to code stuff, who's responsible for most of what we're seeing out there right now?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Martin, the property owner is responsible to deal with that ultimately at the end of the day. So, yeah.
That makes sense. And just getting back to, I know, I've mentioned it way back in the past, but maybe a conversation for next year again, because in my conversations with environmental health, when it comes to code deficient businesses, from what I understand, the strictures that state law puts on, say, our fine structure, that we can levy against businesses that are consistently out of compliance, and it being a low enough amount where some businesses- just work it into their business model and write the check time and time again. So I, I'm tremendously excited about this program and appreciate the work. Just want to make sure that we have an adequate, if we've got this good of a carrot, we should probably have a more functional stick, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. No additional questions? Let's press on.
I'm still here. I'll be here all night.
Oh, got it for me. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Tonight, I'm going to present to you our business retention program. So why this program? It is important to note, very similar to NICS facade improvement, that this originated from the CD REIT work plan of 2022 and 2023. In the summer of 2022, we came to you and City Council to let you know about our initiatives, what was on our work plan, and one of the things that one of our subcommittees was working on was doing some research into displacement and anti-displacement policies and how those might fit into the city of Bloomington. So as many of our small businesses are underserved, businesses are in aging business nodes, and this retention program would strive to be a tool, both financially to support when these locations would look to redevelopment. In this case, we did not engage with the public on this policy, mostly because it was important that we knew that this was a benefit. We don't have anything like this in the city to support displacement for commercial businesses, so we saw that as a plus. We also wanted to make sure that in some of these conversations, when you're mentioning relocation to displacement, if we brought that to the public, it might be perceived that there could be a project already underhand, and we didn't want to give the misconception or undue concern. So the purpose for this is to better ensure that we continue to cultivate a diverse and vibrant business community. This program would provide a path to maintain these businesses within Bloomington city limits with initial financial options when facing displacement and relocation. So we want to make sure that we're supporting these small businesses. Program requirements, so for those who would like to apply for this, it would be an online application, they'd have to follow the preceding steps. In this case, the intent and hope for this would be a one-year forgivable loan, so that if you do apply for this, you do get the either minimum amount of $5,000 or maximum amount of $15,000 per borrower. If you are able to retain in your new location within those 12 months, you could have this be forgivable. The funds would be on a first-come, first-served basis. Some of the eligible expenses for this could, would include the following that are listed here. As many know, permit fees are expenses, it could help with lease payments, infrastructure improvements, so removing or relocation, relocating could be quite expensive. In eligible expenses would include some of the following: your accounts payable, inventory costs, or direct business-related bills would be some of the few that we would not include in these expenses or eligible. Our racial equity impact assessment was done, and that, similar to NICS, that we found that this would only be a benefit to our community. There's nothing like this currently in any of our city programs, and we felt we'd be continuing to uplift our small businesses. So the research that we did seemed like this would be a benefit to those in our small business community. In alignment with our citywide plans and priorities, we believe it aligns with our Bloomington tomorrow together, it helps with equitable economic growth, public relations, communications, and marketing strategy. We're there to help and advance our business advocates and our business community. And our Port Authority Economic Development five-year plan, this directly speaks to the retention portion and the expansion of that plan. Did you have any questions directly for this program?
Questions, Council? Councilmember Lohman?
I think this thing turned on. So I see that there's a forgivable loan slash grant. Why not a grant, why a loan?
Yeah, so we were advised to call this a loan in this case versus a grant, the intent being that if we were, we're going to give these funds upfront. So unlike the matching plan of the facade improvement, these would be given to those to relocate it immediately. It would be considered like a loan at first, once they supply themselves with a signed lease within the city of Bloomington and those city limits. If they can maintain staying in that location within the 12 months of that loan disbursement, it would be then forgivable. So the hope is that we're helping get our small businesses over the hump of that relocation, staying in Bloomington and, you know, maintaining a thriving business to the, you know, the best of our ability to support that relocation. So the hope was to make sure that this money got into their hands right away, went to the process of moving and relocating, and hopefully a cost that they, they could have forgiven at the end of the day, as long as they stay in Bloomington.
Is there any concern at all in terms of the health of any of these businesses, in terms of a, or will that be handled through the application process?
Part of that will be in our application process. At first, we will be making sure that they're qualified. We're only looking at small businesses, that would be 50 full-time people or less with under $2 million in revenue. So we'd be making sure that this isn't going to a larger business who would utilize these funds to relocate incorrectly. And then from there, it would be on a first-come, first-served basis, so it would be dependent on how many other applicants would be applying at this time. If you're looking at a commercial node where several could be relocating, that could be a little bit more based on a timing aspect of who's applying first.
So we're not necessarily looking at the viability of the business necessarily when they're applying, or are we?
We are. We're definitely looking at commercial nodes, that would be a priority in this program, and we would be looking at the business itself. But as long as it does meet the minimum criteria, we would be looking at that as a potential viable loan.
All right, last question for you. And then, and since this is a grant, how are we going to sustain this for the long term?
So our hope is to start off with some small seed money to see where this comes. The maximum here is $15,000, so we are going to be taking $45,000 for our first run at this program as a pilot program. This is one of those programs that may not be used for a period of time. This would be volunteer redevelopment, so we're waiting on someone to develop, where then someone could no longer retain their lease in that location. There may be many times there isn't a need for it, and then there may be times where a larger, older commercial node would be, you know, redeveloping, and we could need more funds. So the hope is to build on this year by year and eventually add more to our funds.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's more of a comment. The one thing I really want to see come back, especially as I've been out just hearing some of the challenges and hurdles that businesses run into, as we go through these, I really want to understand what are the common themes that are coming up that these businesses are sharing with us, so that we can understand what those are and put things in place to help alleviate those hurdles, so that these can be more effective as we move forward. So that's something I definitely want to see come back.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any other questions, Council? Very good. Is there anyone next, or is that?
That's it.
That is it. Very good.
If you do have any additional questions for any of us, we are happy to take them.
Very good. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So you showed that beautiful slide of the business continuum, and I liked the detailed version. Is that going to be on our website soon? Are we going to be promoting that among the business community?
Certainly, we will be. We need to do a little bit more tweaking of it, but as I said during the presentation, it's meant to be a living document, so.
And then I will build off of something that Councilmember Muah said, and I, I know this comes up in conversations frequently when we talk about small businesses in Bloomington, and I, so I know staff are having conversations about any kind of issues, whether it's related to our code or other things that might make it harder for small businesses in Bloomington. And, and so I just, I, I don't know, can you talk more about, is there, is there going to be kind of a more formal strategy developed, or are you just kind of documenting things as you go and then trying to figure out, you know, is this a reoccurring theme, and are we going to do something about? I guess, I feel like it comes up frequently, and so I, I'm wondering what staff is thinking as a process to move forward with taking in that kind of input and figuring out through that assessment if there are some key themes that, that would inform some policy discussions for us.
Yes, Councilmember Carter, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that is the exact right question to ask. I think right now we're working out what type of cadence would be appropriate for that, and I know there are other teams that have been looking at this as well. So right now, just initially, we were thinking every six months of bringing together everybody who works permitting, BNI, et cetera, with small businesses, and hearing that feedback and seeing what types of policy changes we might need to make. Also, these programs are meant to be reviewed annually to make sure they're still relevant if we need to change some of the application processes or requirements as well. So I do think I would prefer to have a regular cadence at which we do this, so that, you know, we don't hear something, then it sort of slides aside over time.
Thank you. And I think from a council perspective, it's also super helpful to be able to, you can just kind of have a shared understanding of the types of policies that we are working on that are in support of small businesses and, and businesses in general. So I think about the sign policy discussion that we're going to have later tonight, right? Like, that was really, the language in our code has been very tricky for staff and for people in the business community, I assume. And so just things that we are working on collectively to help address some of the issues that we have heard about, and then continuing to document those and work towards solutions. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, Councilmember. And so the, Holly just kind of briefly touched on the workforce development committee work that we've been doing, and as we've come to the end of our work, looking at possibilities for, for subcommittees and work products and what we really want to accomplish, and actually, a lot of what we've talked about in that group really do dovetail very nicely into the work that's going on at staff level and at other places within, here at City Hall. Telling, telling Bloomington's story is one of the things that was identified with this group and, and marketing Bloomington in a special way, and we continue to talk about that. I mean, obviously, here we see the Public Relations, Communications, and Marketing Strategic Plan. We know we're working on it at the city level. We've got the subcommittee talking about it, so yet to bring all that work together, but then also a discussion on removing barriers for, for business just in general. And not just at the staff level, as, as Holly was saying, not just to bring the staff together and put their heads together, but to actually to get out and talk to small business owners and have them say, well, you know, this is kind of an issue that we might want to address. And, and to be able to do that on a recurring and consistent basis, and to have that feedback loop not just be, not just be a sounding board, but actually then work through some of those issues, I think is an incredibly important part of all of this. So I agree with you completely, and I think, I, I know we've got at least a couple of different wheels in motion in terms of this, and I hope we can accomplish what, exactly what you're talking about in terms of removing those barriers. Anything else, Council? Very good. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
And as Councilmember Carter threw the teaser out for our next item, item 5.2, our second part of our discussion on our signed ordinance study. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Oop, careful now.
Sorry.
Static electricity will get you every time.
Should have learned that one by now. Forgive me here, I'm just going to share my slides briefly. Okay, thank you. So the study session before you this evening, mayor members, is to present our new draft sign code. A couple of points about that, the document that was in your packet represents all of the new content that would replace, effectively replace the existing sign code. What I would say it does not include is the multitude of cross-references and all of the other kind of ordinances or sections of the city code that refer to the sign code. After kind of debating it internally in terms of what the best approach was, we decided that in order to build, in order to kind of give us the best chance going forward, it was best to build consensus on the draft new sign code before tying and weaving all of the other connective joints and tissue of the city code into this document in the preparation of a formal ordinance. I just wanted to make that point. And so what are we looking for tonight? What we're looking for is a discussion about whether or not we think that this new sign code is ready for a formal public hearing process. Is it advanced long enough, and is it meeting kind of the vision for how Bloomington wants to regulate signage and go forward? I would just add a note that we did the same exercise with Planning Commission on November 16th, and it was a good discussion. I'll kind of share the same thing with you that I will with them. We've even condensed this down just a little bit more for you, given the nature of your agendas. But, you know, there's 35 pages in the new draft sign code, the existing one is 79, so I still think it's an improvement. I wish it was shorter than it was. But in this presentation, I'm not going to go into every section of the draft code, but I will be happy to answer your questions about specific elements if, if there are some. So just getting into an agenda here just for this study session, here's some of the topics. I just want to go over, I want to provide a quick background component, just reiterate the project goals, give you a short update about the legal review of the existing and the draft code, provide you some insight into some of the public engagement activities we've been doing, and then just do an overview of some of the key elements of the new draft sign code. And then we'll just wrap up with our proposed timeline and next steps for this project. So in terms of why we are here, of course, the sign code is on the Planning Commission work plan. It's been a target to update it for a few years now. The existing sign code was created in 1996. We talked, I may have mentioned that in January when we were last together talking about this topic. In the, the period following that engagement session and around that timeline, we did engage with sign installers, so we have continued to speak with some sign installers throughout our drafting process. And we also did a survey and engagement with several local jurisdictions, some of whom have recently updated their science standards. In fact, I've learned that a few more cities are working on this, probably for some of the same legal reasons with recent case law and whatnot. So I anticipate more cities to be working on this in the coming year or two. So, and then just to reiterate, we did a study session in January, that's when we did the polling exercise. I just want to reiterate that those activities were mainly used to try and delineate or build, or figure out where we had broad consensus among the Planning Commission and Council. We did have some instances of kind of close tie votes and things like that. So where we had, where we had clear consensus, we certainly drove in those directions where it was a little bit, a little bit more mixed, we had to kind of use some best judgment calls based on best practices and research and other things. I'll try and identify those things. Just in terms of research methods of what informed the draft code, it's really a wide collection. We're trying to take, take what's best of what's local, the best of some national examples that have been pointed to us, and then also there's a number of different model ordinances that we've kind of pulled from. And not all of those are going to align well with what Bloomington's, like, land use mix is, or kind of what our community character is, or kind of what the aesthetics here are. So we kind of have to pull together elements of different sources and put it together in something that we think makes sense for Bloomington. Okay. I presented this same slide to you previously in January. This, these project goals have not changed. This is still the three measuring sticks that we are testing the different policy decisions when we're debating certain standards internally with staff. These are kind of the three things that we look at. Does it conform with current legal standards? Does it improve clarity, reduce the complexity of this ordinance? And does it improve the organization formatting and user experience? Those are the three things that we really try and stress. I mentioned the overall reduction in content, so the new sign code is over 50% shorter. Hopefully, it's laid out in a much more sensical manner, and that people are not going to be kind of doing keyword searches and trying to use a magic trick to figure out what type of sign or how big it can be, allowed at their property. So hopefully, we feel like it's been laid out in a pretty logical way, based on a model ordinance recommended by our contracted legal counsel in that instance. So I think, hopefully, we're moving in the right direction in all three of these categories. Just to give you an update about the legal elements, Kevin Toski is here this evening from the, the legal department, of course, Melissa, but, and this project has been a little bit different from some other typical community development ordinances or planning projects, in that the legal department, because of the, the complexity and nature of this project, they are basically a co-author in this, in this project. So Kevin's helped me draft large sections of the, the new sign code, and I'm very appreciative of that help. But so it's just really important that they are there to review kind of those content neutrality and other legal elements of these provisions. And so in support of that, as I mentioned back in January, we did contract with a nationally recognized legal expert in this regard, John Baker with Green Espal. So he has reviewed our existing sign code and kind of identified at all the landmines or red flags for us with current case law. And we have sent him the new draft sign code, and we anticipate him to return his comments to us in December. So we're moving in the right direction in that regard. Terms of engagement process, the, because the sign code touches on so many different inter- internal departments and divisions within the city, we've actually done a lot of internal engagement, frankly, because every different department, division at the city interacts with the sign standards in different ways. Parks and Rec, for example, has a lot of different facilities that they have signage for. Police and Fire have public safety interests in some of these provisions, like addressing and other things. The city clerk just went through an election process. I'm sure there's lots of signs out in the community for that type of thing. So yeah, it's, it's a process that many different people are involved with. In terms of the internal engage, excuse me, external engagement, really dealing with direct engagement, I want to emphasize that as much as we can, both with groups and individuals. Of course, there's lots of different trade associations or organizations that represent various interests. So we've been talking with the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, actually just met with them the other day, and they included our sign ordinance in their draft email blast out to all their members. That was appreciated on their part. The Minnesota Retailer Association, the Shopping Center Association, the Industrial and Office Properties, Commercial Real Estate Association. So we've been working with all these groups. They're all aware of our effort to do this. But in addition to that, we also regularly interact with a lot of Bloomington property owners, some of whom own and operate, you know, various commercial and industrial buildings. And every chance we get, we let them know, hey, we're working on this. Some choose to engage, some don't, and that's fine. But they're on our list as well. And then just various individuals, whether they be architects, working on behalf of a client, or just other property owners with interest in the sign code. We've got, we've grown a good list of ongoing contacts. Then of course, our online engagement page, we have been utilizing that as well, had decent traffic on it, and it's picked up a little bit lately, so that's good. In terms of sign types, so this is where I'm going to get into specific topics with the new sign code and the things that I kind of highlight in bold. I suppose that's kind of my subtle nudge to try and maybe solicit more direct feedback from you to make sure that we're pointed in the right direction. But you're going to see in the new sign code, we try and utilize and implement tables wherever we can when you're kind of laying out lots of information. So this looks very similar to the, if you're familiar with the use table in the city zoning code, which identifies all the allowed uses by zoning district, this is very much a similar approach. So at the top, you can see we have different sign districts. The current sign code has eight of these. We've consolidated that down into five sign districts, basically. And what this table is laying out for you, what are all the different sign types that are allowed within these different sign districts? So it should be fairly straightforward or should be more predictable in terms of people being able to locate this information. We have removed some obsolete sign types, so some of the complexity we deal with is they either have two very similar sign types that they're kind of confusing or it's just unnecessary, it just adds unnecessary complexity to this document and makes it more complicated than it needs to be. In terms of building signs, one thing I do want to touch on is that when we did the polling exercise, we talked about uniformity of construction. So as I mentioned, some cities do require, particularly in multi-tenant situations, that sign types across a, across a multi-tenant building all have the same construction type. And as a reminder, there's two basic building type, types of signs. There's cabinet signs, which are generic, general shape, square, a triangle, or whatever, with the lit cabinet typically. And then there's the channel cut construction, which is individual letters and symbols put together. So our current code has a uniformity of construction sign type. This was an area in the polling exercise that Planning Commission and City Council were both pretty split on. It wasn't, there wasn't clear marching orders to go in one direction or the other. I would say that the staff, the draft before you does not include a uniformity of construction requirement, and there's several reasons for that, not just having to do with the project goals of adding complexity in those things, but planning staff in terms of, we've interacted with a lot of sign installers and building owners, and there's several downstream things that can happen with uniformity of construction. One is there's certain businesses whose logos or branding don't marry well with one sign type or the other. So eventually, not often, but in some cases, it can cause kind of some problems for those business owners in terms of manufacturing, fabricating the sign of their choosing that they want on their site. The second reason is that a lot of private property owners actually implement their very own signage requirements at their multi-tenant sites. So it's something that we think is happening more effectively between the private parties as they sign leases, as they establish their businesses in Bloomington. That's one piece of it. Another piece of it is that it adds an extra layer of regulatory complexity. We have, we require all multi-tenant sites to have what's called uniform sign designs, where we establish at every building that has more than one tenant, what the sign construction has to be. Those documents have to be tracked over time, updated over time. Staff has to reference them, the sign installers need to review them. It just adds another extra layer. The fourth thing, just from an equity perspective, channel cut signs are much more costly than cabinet signs in many cases. And so when you're requiring uniformity of construction in some cases, you know, a sign that was, say, $5,000 to manufacture now becomes 10. Those are just, you know, generic numbers. I'm not referencing a specific quote of recent time, but I'm saying that there is a, there's a downstream impact to that, which, which we find some difficulty with. And then finally, just from a perspective, you know, if you look, read through all the purpose statements about the sign code, what it's intended to do, it is intended to manage visual clutter, it is tended to prevent harm to the physical environment, those types of things. But what we're trying to do is put a test of public peace, safety, health, welfare to a lot of these regulations that we're putting together for signage. And that's one that we think kind of veers closer more to the aesthetics lane than it does on kind of protecting the peace, health, safety, welfare piece of it. So that's just our piece. And it's not to say that you can't do that. A lot of cities do go that route. I just want to give you the, the unvaried staff perspective on this. Signage allowances. So if you recall, another thing that we did during this polling exercise was to evaluate whether or not we felt that the amount of signage in most situations in Bloomington was appropriate for the development types that we have here. And there was good consensus on that. I think both groups were very supportive of the signage allowances that we established. And so we took that guidance and we reviewed and evaluated a lot of recent sign permits that we had reviewed, and we put it through the test of our new sign code. One way that the new sign code is different than the existing sign code is that we actually utilize lot frontage and building or tenant space frontage as a means to establish the amount of signage that they're allowed. And the reason that we do that is that these are two pieces of information that are much more readily available for all properties in Bloomington, as opposed to always having detailed, say, elevation plans of every building, architectural plans in effect. So on the screen before you, on the image is just an example. I think we had the same image in our January slide, but knowing that a building tenant space is 75 feet wide is a much easier thing to calculate and know with certainty, as opposed to if you have incomplete architectural drawings and basing signage on a percentage of wall area. So again, getting back to those project goals, less complexity, more consistency, we just think this is a much better approach. The, what this means of how we actually determine the amount of signage is based on multiplication factors. So I'll show you that when it comes to both freestanding and building signage. But basically what those are intended to meet is still to accommodate and provide the appropriate amount of signage for 90 to 95% of the situations of what you see in Bloomington. There are outliers, I can think of a few buildings, I don't want to name them or list their addresses, that have maybe very large signs beyond what might be appropriate, but basically what we think is that you're not going to create a lot of non-conformity is kind of the key there with some of these ratios that we're recommending. So getting into an example of that, so freestanding signs, similar to my comment about sign types, we're really trying to consolidate all this information into a table. So here you've got the number of signs allowed, setbacks, the maximum height of the signs, and then the area of the signs, broken down by all these sign districts here. And so some sign districts will retain just having a flat amount of freestanding signage, like say for a place of assembly in the class one district or a multifamily building in the class two district, those kind of remain the same. But in our class, what would be the new class three district, which is where the majority of our commercial and industrial properties are located, what we're talking about doing is going to a frontage calculation with a maximum, with a cap, basically. And where we landed for that is point four. We also are providing larger sign heights and allowances under certain circumstances along the freeway, I-94, I'm sorry, 494, 35W and 77. So there is some consideration of that element, which is something that we had to put together through consolidating some of these sign districts. And the other thing I'll say about this too is with the current sign code, by having a flat amount for every property, if you have a property that has 50 feet of frontage versus a property that has 250 feet of frontage, right now currently, they're both get the same size sign, which doesn't make a lot of practical sense in terms of the sizes of development and how many tenants they can have in consideration of that. So something to think about there. Yeah, the, just on the slide, again, this is just a visual example. So you've got kind of a corner site here, a site with multiple street frontages, they would be allowed a freestanding sign at every side that has a street frontage. And you can kind of see those lot frontage area or lot frontage distances and what it translates when you utilize that point four multiplication factor. And the multiplication factors are kind of the, those are the levers that you can pull to either increase or decrease the amount of signage that you want to kind of deploy in these different sign districts. Getting to building signs, so very much similar structure. Again, we're using tables to try and deploy all this information too, so people can figure out, okay, I'm in this sign district, I want to do building signs, here's where I go. Should be pretty straightforward. Another change is that the current sign code has different signage allowances for all different types of building signs. Wall signs are clearly the most popular kind of building sign, but we want to move in a direction where each elevation is granted a certain amount of signage. However you deploy that between all the different sign types, that's kind of up to the property owner and the tenants in the building. So notable changes, I highlighted, again, the class three is the one that we deal with the most, I want to highlight that. What we're proposing is 1.25 square feet per linear foot of tenant space or building frontage. What this really makes easier too is just when you're dealing with a sign installer, you're typically not reworking the whole building, you're dealing with one discrete tenant space or one store frontage. And just having that frontage calculation makes it so much easier for them. We are also proposing a cap for no individual sign exceeding 250 feet. So that's another thing to note, is that kind of gets, I talked about the outlier situation where you have some very large signs just on the basis of very large buildings with very large facades. So some notable changes that I wanted to point out here and kind of seeking your feedback on. One change that we're proposing is currently allowing building signs on all four elevations of the, what would be the new class three, and that's today's class four, but it's where most of our commercial and industrial properties are. Currently, they're only allowed on any side that faces a public street, which makes sense, but also either a primary or secondary elevation. Another tricky thing about that is they have different allowance sizes for the primary and the secondary. Again, we're trying to make this less complex. But we think that the nuisance characteristics associated with signage are driven by two main things. Sign illumination and the brightness of the sign once it is lit. So if you have standards on when a sign can be lit in terms of proximity to residential uses, if it's too close, then it can't be lit. That kind of addresses one of the characteristics. If it can be lit, then again, we already have a pretty effective inspection program kind of run by planning staff where we do measure the brightness of signs. So we would continue to do that, and all that content is currently in the city's lighting ordinance. So we feel comfortable moving in a direction to allow more signs on more elevations of buildings, which we already do in our mixed-use districts. So if you think about the B4s and the LXs and HXR and kind of that, those more mixed-use type areas, they're already allowed that, granted that. We haven't had a lot of issues with that. And of course, it's in a smaller area, but we just haven't had issues with it. So that's another thing. And, you know, two, the other thing is just that buildings, just to give them more creativity, you can, you can think about a situation where you have some internal activity or event spaces within an internal courtyard of a building. If they've already maxed out their building frontage, they can't put any additional building branding or signage on that interior facing area currently. So it just kind of stifles creativity to a certain extent. Okay, special use sign standards. So one of our goals was to try and eliminate this as much as we can. And the reason being just that the more kind of carve-outs, I don't want to call it that, but the more special standards you have for every individual use, it just keeps layering complexity into the code that if you kind of take that to the extreme, just gets really difficult to deal with. That being said, there does need to be some special considerations for certain uses in Bloomington, not only to create a lot of non-conformity with what exists today, but also just an acknowledgement that these standards existed for a reason. They were created in many ways. We were eliminate, were able to eliminate a lot of them, but there were some that we didn't feel that we could eliminate. So which ones are those? Freestanding signs, we do have special standards proposed for college and school campuses. We are continuing some of the signage standards for high-usage parks. You know, that's your Dred Scott, that's your Valley View, that's the most utilized parks in Bloomington. And of course, the golf courses, that's new, we are proposing to add that. And then play fields, I know the school district is working on, of course, has Lincoln, but also is working on properties, or is working on the development of some additional play fields, and it's becoming much more common to have some signage associated with those. So that is built into the draft. I do want to highlight that. In terms of building signs, where do we think special use standards are necessary? So currently, we have the office towers that have limited numbers of signs per elevation and have some special size considerations, given that they're, they're so far up that they do need to be larger. Service area canopies, that's kind of a unique feature of that type of use that is pretty common to deploy signage on at a gas station, of course. College campus signs, so light pole signs, those types of things. And then signage on parking structures. So currently, the existing sign code allows signs on parking structures only in certain sign districts. So we're proposing to not have it be only applicable to one or two sign districts, but just applicable for parking structures that are above a certain number of stories, but limited to one sign per elevation at a smaller size. So electronic signs, we get a lot of feedback about this one. There's a lot of discussion, both internal and external. But I'll touch on a couple standards here. A new standard would be, currently we don't have a cap on a maximum size for an electronic sign. And I should start by saying that the issue with electronic signs is just kind of more distracted driving, more distraction within the public realm can result in some safety concerns, just in terms of people utilizing the right of way, whether they be motorized or non-motorized transportation, including walking, of course. So we are proposing a size cap. That currently doesn't exist in the code. It is somewhat common amongst some of the ordinances that we studied to kind of recognize that these signs have a higher, do present a higher instance of potential public safety concern. And so that's really what feeds into that. Setback from residential, that's retaining the same standard. I will talk about orientation here in a minute, but we currently have 100-foot setback for these sign types from residential uses. Dwell time, this is kind of the hot topic for a lot of people from some of the feedback we get. Our existing standards is for changeable copy only is eight seconds, and for graphics is currently 20 minutes, and that just means that the sign can't change for that period of time. It has to stay static or remain the same. Our, our draft sign code includes reducing the dwell time to graphics for 10 minutes, but I'll, you know, I want to be very kind of straightforward about this issue is that the preferences range all over the map, and that's not just external, that's internal too. There are, you know, certainly elements of the city that, you know, wish they could do more programming, particularly Parks and Rec and Fire public safety messages on these sign types. And then kind of on the other side of that coin is certainly traffic and other staff who are, have more concern about the visual clutter, but also the distraction and those kind of elements. What, to my own, and so the external piece of it, yes, there's certainly a lot of external parties that want to reduce our dwell time for these sign types. The frustrating piece or the challenging piece maybe for the staff working on the ordinance is that there is a ton of research out there about this very topic, but it has not been able to establish a broad consensus as to what the exact, what the best standard should be for certain even driving speeds like road types, because that's driven, that's driven by some of it, but also just kind of various environments in terms of land use type and those things. What you often see is eight seconds a lot, and the reason you see eight seconds is because the Federal Highway Administration issued a report some years ago where they landed on can absolutely be no smaller than eight seconds, or shorter than, I should say, not smaller. So that's why you see that kind of a lot. But what I would tell you is that even within our own region here, you'll see the range is, I know of a city that has a three-second dwell time, and that's for gra, that's for anything, not video, but just obviously, but they have a three-second dwell time. And then there's a community near us that has a 60-minute dwell time. So that's the range that we're dealing with on this stuff. So it's, it's kind of challenging. So I mean, I certainly would welcome your feedback, particularly on that. When we polled this question, there was a mix of wanting to keep our existing standards in place or reduce them, so kind of just... standards in place or, uh, reduce them. So kind of just, uh, taking temperature on that, uh, here yet again. And, and I, I think it's a tricky issue and depending on what, what, uh, what area you're coming at it from it, um, I respect all the opinions on both sides of it in terms of, um, what their goals are. On the nighttime restriction piece of this would be something that's new. Um, currently we have an orientation standard that these electronic signs can't be visible from a residential property within 150 feet. It acts as another de facto setback in effect. What we would propose to go away from that, again, is being more considerate of the nuisance characteristics, is that if it's within 150 feet, the sign either be turned off, uh, you know, during the nighttime hours, however you define that, or it remains static. Because one of the issues with the electronic signs, what makes it a higher nuisance is that this, the message is changing frequently, which casts light in different ways, um, uh, to nearby properties. So either static or, um, uh, turned off, you know, that does have the potential for some additional enforcement component, but we already deal with that in some levels on sign brightness and those types of things. So a couple of things to consider or think about there. Um, that's the extent of the, uh, main things I wanted to present to you in terms of the content. There are other sections of the, um, draft sign code that I didn't touch on this, just in respect to time. Uh, we certainly can talk about those things, but in terms of next steps, what we're thinking about, as I mentioned, we did the same exercise with planning commission. It was a good discussion. Um, uh, they felt, uh, ready or comfortable with the state of the draft to go forward into a public hearing process, uh, recognizing, A, that there can be a lot more engagement and feedback done through that process, but also with the city being the applicant, we're not subject to any, uh, agency action timeline, uh, requirement and along those ends. So we really have the opportunity to start the public engagement process, but, um, uh, continue to refine if need be, uh, depending on, uh, what adjustments need to be made. So, uh, if we get kind of that, uh, uh, kind of that green light or that thumbs up, we would begin drafting the full version of the ordinance, dealing with all those cross references and connective tissue like I talked about. We'll continue to engage with, uh, people. We've, we've had a number of meetings with, uh, different parties who are interested in this topic. And I would expect they, you know, will be, uh, submitting comments and reaching out to you all as the decision makers about this process. So, um, I think that, uh, I'm optimistic that we're going to get good engagement on this process. And then, uh, again, finally, just, um, going forward in scheduling public hearings if we think we're ready. If we were to move along that staff and planning commission recommended, uh, timeline, um, we would be doing these refinements and revisions in December of this year, and then schedule a public hearing at planning commission in January and, uh, an anticipated hearing at city council in February. So that's where we're at from a, a timeline perspective. Happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, so I was going to try and help you out and go back to all the slides and look at where you had the bolded areas and then realize that the presentation doesn't have any of those bolded areas in them.
Oh, yeah. Oops.
So I missed, I missed on that. I apologize. So, because I wanted to go through step by step. I think you said you did something similar with the planning commission, and I want to make sure that we answer the questions, or at least have the discussions where you'd like to have the discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I can, uh, identify those points.
That would be helpful.
But I, and I also welcome just general questions too, because I know it's an extensive document, but I can lead you through those.
Why don't we start with any general questions, and then we can double back to, uh, some of the more specific discussion areas that, uh, Mr. Johnson wants to talk with, uh, council member Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so first general question, I know that there have been a couple of businesses who have struggled with, um, the sign ordinance relatively recently, meaning like the last four years, um, since I've been on. And so I'm wondering if, um, if you engaged with them in, um, making these decisions or getting to a point of recommendation, I should say, and/or are you planning to bring this to some of those businesses so that they could, um, weigh in on whether this may, would have been more helpful in their experience with the city?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember, uh, Carter, uh, we generally have let, um, if, I mean, it depends on which individual businesses you're talking about, of course, but, um, the, the people that I'm aware of, that I know have expressed some, uh, or have had some challenges, uh, we have been promoting this process, uh, to them or their representatives. Um, so I, you know, I feel confident that we've been doing a good job in that regard. Um, that being said, I mean, I, I still, I, I think we're only, you know, maybe I've only talked with 20% of the people who will ultimately engage the process, because sometimes it all just comes in one big wave, and that's okay if it does. Um, but I'd be, uh, and I mean, if anyone, if the word is a way to get a word out, I'm happy to engage with anyone about their specific concerns.
Okay.
Um, yep, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, well, and I can just email you two of the businesses I'm thinking of specifically. So, um, another general question, I'm just curious, when you made the decisions of, um, uh, the, the different classes, classes, that's what we're calling them, yes. Um, I'm just curious why B1 and I1 were included in the new class two and not class three with other, the other B and C, most of the other B and C zones.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Carter, that's a good question. So, um, B1 and I1 are currently in our existing class three, and they function as very small, um, uh, footprint or, uh, low impact kind of commercial and industrial development. Um, not only that, but there's very few of these properties in Bloomington.
I was trying to find them on our map, and I like couldn't even find them, so.
Yeah. So they're, you know, not B1, well, maybe not either, but, um, it'd be good to try and get, you know, consolidate some of those things. But, um, to answer your question directly, these properties actually have, uh, you know, they're closer to residential uses in many cases, as few of them as there are. Uh, and they happen to be much smaller developments. So having a flat, lower, uh, freestanding and building signage allowance is actually more in line with our multifamily residential districts than it is, uh, um, uh, with the allowances within the class, the new class three, or what all the other commercial and industrial properties have.
That makes sense. I'll just ask two more questions. I'm going back to the electronic and video signs and talking about dwell time. I still don't really understand the difference between a changeable copy sign and a graphic display sign. So is changeable copy just words?
Mayor Councilmember Carter, that's correct. So just text on a, um, a uniform background of some color.
Okay. And then so this specifics, like this picture right here, this would be a graphic.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, and then my last question, I mean, I can weigh in on the specifics that you want, but kind of more general. Um, in the initial feedback from external companies, and this was like going way back into the documents, um, they, there was an indication that in other cities, it was laid out in table format. And so it was easier to understand, like what the requirements were. And so I noticed we have tables in our newly developed ordinance language. And is that what they were referring to? Or is there some way we could even have like the official language, but then have a tool that makes it even more straightforward and simple?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Carter, and, um, generally, uh, we can utilize, we try and utilize tables as much as we can. Typically, when there's, uh, a lot of inputs, like the number of sign districts and a lot of, uh, rows, if that makes sense, um, sorry, the standards on top rows are the sign districts, uh, in the rows. But, um, take for example, electronic signs, you could easily move this information into a table. It would be a smaller discrete table. But yes, we try and utilize that formatting because it's much easier for, uh, installers. It's mostly signed contractors and installers who review our code, sometimes businesses, um, usually only when something goes wrong. Uh, but, uh, yeah, so they, that's what they're talking about. They're talking about, it's much easier to locate this, uh, information. Our current sign code, um, in deference to, you know, the staff and the group that put that together in the nineties, it's just a very long redundant list under each sign district, and it becomes very difficult to find what you're looking for in that format.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so I did, I do recall the uniformity of construction style was one of your questions, and I am in favor with what the staff is proposing. And then I also am supportive of the, um, change to electronic signs in, uh, near residential areas. And I'm not remembering.
The nighttime restriction?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then I will just plant the seed now. I would love to talk a little bit more about billboards, but I will not say anything about that yet, if there are others who are also interested in having a little bit more discussion about our standards there.
All right. Again, general questions, and then we'll double back to the specifics here. Uh, Councilmember Lohman?
So Mayor, we're going to go through the slides, each one of them, or?
Yeah, I think there was maybe a half dozen, I think, with something bolded on that the staff was looking for specific discussion on.
Okay. I'll hold those off then. So then my, just the one, okay. So then I had the one question, uh, uh, with respect to municipal entities, uh, along with nonprofit services. Um, you know, I know we don't have specific zoning, um, you know, components or codes for those particular areas. And so what I'm just curious about, you know, with that, with that respect, um, do other cities have an advantage because they have those separate districts, uh, districts when it relates to how they enforce, you know, for those particular entities, uh, that are like that? And that's kind of where my question lies, you know, because I, I see that with the, with the, uh, um, the special use sign standards with respect to, um, schools. But then my question then relies with respect to, you know, yeah, fire stations and that kind of thing. So that was kind of where my question lies, you know, you know, the, you know, do, do those, those cities have an advantage when they have those, those separate, you could separate that out?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Lohman, I don't know if I would say they have an advantage, but there's two primary wise ways, uh, from the sign ordinances I've reviewed, um, to kind of organize, uh, regulatory allowances around signage. There's, uh, either by their zoning district or a sign district, by consolidating zoning districts into sign districts, or it's by uses specifically. And so you'll see some sign codes that have industrial use signage standards or retail or, you know, so on and so forth. And so they certainly could have, uh, a government one. Um, you're correct in that we have addressed some of that issue by having special standards for larger parks, which are zoned R1, which is all, most of our, uh, public properties or government properties are zoned, uh, R1. Um, but the other way that we do that is by having allowances for non-residential uses in the class one, which is also utilized by places of assembly, um, which are zoned R1. And so that's really the main way that you get around it. Now, you can kind of, uh, create either more signage or less signage for non-residential uses in the R1. That's up to us wherever we set the, the parameter, so to speak. Um, uh, but I, I mean, anecdotally from going through the process previously with the fire stations, for example, uh, the amount of signage, the quantity of signage, uh, they found adequate, uh, to meet their needs. So you certainly can visit those sites and see if that's kind of an appropriate or, uh, amount of signage. They utilize a flat amount of signage. Um, uh, there are some caps on the number, uh, and then, um, uh, just in terms of the amount per wall area. But what I would say is that they effectively, uh, utilized a similar allowance, because the allowance isn't proposed to change that much from the existing to the code. The formatting and how the, the information is delivered is much different, but, um, the overall allowance in the, the class one, uh, remains relatively the same.
Yeah, I guess that's sort of, I mean, not so much for that a- aspect of it. That certainly gets me to part of it, but it's just those, a lot of those nonprofits in terms of what they're trying to do, or, uh, when county comes in or other, you know, governmental entities come in and they want to, you know, try to provide a different type of service. Those are kind of the concerns I kind of have, you know, with that. And since we're already looking at it, that's sort of where my question is, if we ought to, you know, dive a little deeper into that, uh, those pieces. So, um, in particular with the, with the nonprofit organizations, we talk about creativity and that type of thing. Um, you know, as we kind of move in our direction as a city, um, I, I want to be able to make sure when we look at, uh, larger cities, uh, and what they do, you know, Minneapolis-St. Paul, how do we allow that creativity to exist since we have that, that residential standard, the class?
Yeah, thank you. It's well taken. And you could, you know, you could tweak, uh, special use standards for that. Again, there's, want to try and, uh, limit the use of special use sign districts, but obviously there's certain properties in the R1 that are much, have much different needs than, than most.
Can I see another hand? Councilmember Nelson, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. And I will keep this general, although I do have a number of specific things that I don't frankly think it makes a lot of sense to take the council's time going through. Um, so my question is, you're still looking for input from other groups and, and things to the specifics? Okay. If that's the case, then, because I see some things with regards to the real estate industry, um, the home remodeling industry specifics in here that I think would be good. I'll help connect you and, and share some of those thoughts and concerns.
That's great. Thank you.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you, Councilmember. Here, we're through with the general questions. Why don't you, just if you could, run through the?
Yeah, and I appreciate, and I appreciate your comment in that regard too. I kind of struggle with this type of, of the 35-page document of, uh, you know, of how to, how to best utilize your time and, you know, um, and those things. But yeah, so like one of the, um, these are just the things that to, to, I'll be frank, to Glenn and I, these things are the things that we hear the most, or where we think that, uh, we just wanted the most direction on. So this uniformity of construction issue, I know that, um, some cities, uh, established that requirement. Staff has presented to you for five or so reasons why we don't think that's the best, uh, role of the sign code, uh, to enforce that thing. But that being said, one of the purposes is managing visual clutter. It's where you want to draw that line in terms of, uh, how valuable or important you think that is to the aesthetics of the community, um, as you look at it. So we would be seeking, uh, guidance on that. But I'm, I'll be blunt, it does add, uh, layers of complexity that are sometimes frustrating and, uh, not just for staff, for the public as well.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, is that oftentimes also just clarified by the building owner? So that they would have their own standards, like for uniformity as well, so it may not be an issue that the city needs to be involved in?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Nelson, one thing I didn't mention in my presentation, so we currently have this process called the Uniform Sign Design, and it's a requirement for all multi-tenant properties and private developments that have multiple buildings, as well as for hotels and a few other reasons that it's unnecessary for. Um, but this new sign code has a similar process called a comprehensive sign plan, wherein a property owner can apply to ha- establish, uh, this type of, um, uh, system on their property where they do have to have uniform construction. So I should say that this sign code doesn't ignore it completely. There is a pathway for property owners that want an approval to be established on their lot, so that no one can, uh, apply for a sign permit of the sign type that doesn't meet their need. Um, there is a pathway to do that. It's just now optional discretionary. Um, but yes, a lot of times, I know, I don't want to single out Kraus Anderson, but I, there one user just comes to my mind, that it's very important to them that their signage be met at Southtown, for example, or some of the other multi-tenants. So it's very much some, it's something that, uh, some property owners are just want to get the tenant in and establish the business. They're not too particular about what the sign looks like. And others, it is very important to them to remain, uh, uniforming. And that's where we think that discussion is best held.
Very good.
So with that, I'll maybe, should I go on to the next one?
Let's do that.
Sounds good. Um, again, I'm just going to focus on the bold ones. Was there any concerns about having signs on all four building elevations of commercial and industrial properties, so long as we manage the lighting and, uh, brightness nuisance issues? Is that okay? Seeing head nodding on that one?
Councilmember Lohman, question?
I'm going to hold my questions on that one till later on.
Well, I, I think we're on this one now. So if you've got a question?
Um, because I think, uh, if you don't mind, I would, I'd like to come back to this one, um, after I have the other, other piece, because I think that might answer my question.
Okay.
If you don't mind. I mean, if not, I want to go to that slide and then have us jumping around, so.
Can make that work, I guess.
So dwell time, uh, electronic signs, again, this is one that we get a wide range of feedback about. And, um, uh, just again, judging from the range that I've seen in the region, um, three seconds all the way up to 60 minutes. Um, this is really something that the, the governing bodies and the planning commission and council can really, um, uh, kind of settle in on and establish what they think is appropriate for, uh, their community.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so if we could start off with, uh, the residential setback piece, um, because what I'm, I'm curious about with the, uh, the lighting standard, what is that, you know, just generally, uh, that we have within that standard? Um, so I'm thinking about, you know, if you're going down, you know, Penn Avenue, I know we had that, that issue with the, uh, uh, with the storage, you know, units where you had the bright sign going on. How does that fit with this, this piece? Help me understand that.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Lohman, um, uh, so every sign in Bloomington is subject to a maximum brightness level. It's called NITS, uh, candela's per square meter. And the, the intensity of the light that you can cast out of that in NITS, uh, is different depending on, uh, whether you are within a certain distance of residential properties. And so that's what establishes it. When we get a sign permit and it's near residential uses, it's a, it's a, uh, blatant condition right on the permit that goes out. You can only be this bright, your sign, and it will be inspected, and we do. Um, and so we do issue orders when they don't, uh, conform to those types of things. Um, I don't have the specific number off the top of my head, but that's how the basic program works. If you're, uh, and we, we are still kind of a dark, we're not, we haven't adopted the formal dark skies ordinance, so I don't want to say that. But we have many dark skies elements to our lighting code. Um, and one of, one of those is which is establishing maximum brightness, um, on different sources of light, including signs. And so when a use is close, and it doesn't matter if it's a, a standard sign or an electronic sign, there's maximum brightness levels that that sign can be. And what it really does effectively is in the evening time, it dulls it down, uh, to a level that, uh, creates less of a new And what it really does effectively is in the evening time, it dulls it down, uh, to a level that, uh, creates less of a nuisance for the abutting or adjacent properties.
Okay, because I think that's where my main, um, you know, Mayor, when I, I think about this is where my main concern is it's around nuisance, you know, within residential properties, you know, so if you've got that, you know, you know, a hundred foot standard or whatever that is from the lighting perspective, or if it's a video, you know, if it's playing all the time, which is kind of my next, my next question is around the, around the video piece. Where does that, does that fit into either of these changeable copy or graphics? Does the video fit into that, or is this, we're not necessarily to that standard where we'll allow you to have a whole video playing?
Yeah, Mayor Councilman Lowman, so video signs and billboards, getting into your question about billboards. So those are, um, uh, the restrictions on them today are effectively, um, kind of eliminates new opportunities to do it. Not for, not so much for video signs, but in so much as this, video signs are not allowed where they're visible to adjoining properties or the public right of way. So that eliminates a lot of the locational opportunities to have video signs, um, in Bloomington. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I think that answers it pretty clearly. So then I guess my next, my next piece that I'll go to, and then I'll just state my, uh, I think I'm done with my questions here. So I guess when I'm looking at this policy perspective, the nuisance component of it, I'm, I'm concerned, I want to, I'd rather be more, um, careful or more restrictive at the beginning of it and then loosen that standard up a little bit more. You know, go, okay, well, is this, is this okay? Does this work? Because I think it's a lot harder to kind of ramp that back, um, you know. Or, you know, you have, you have residents that say, hey, you know, I'm okay with that, you know, having this, this bright thing here, you know, I support that, you know, I, that's a little easier. And the other thing around the, you know, this, this graphic piece is that I know that the, uh, the national, uh, National League of Cities thing, they had the Federal Highway Administration talk about, you know, the zero death, uh, kind of piece. And I know you've kind of talked a little bit about the survey out there of the, of literature out there. But I'm really, you know, I'm, I'm concerned, and I know that, uh, planners that I worked with before, when I was, was here, were very concerned about that, you know, when you, we have these graphic, you know, uh, signs or video signs that are, are taking place, you know, how that could lead to that. And that's the, the main concern I have with that, you know, either death or some type of, uh, casualty as you're, you know, driving down the road or injury or that type of thing. So again, I'd like to try to see if we can, you know, be cautious as we kind of move down that, that, that process of that and then open up the standards. Or if there's some type of evidence that's out there that shows that, you know, that, you know, less than eight seconds is not a big deal or less than ten minutes, you know, that we're not going to create that. That's my, my greatest concern that I have around that. And then once you kind of do that, you know, trying to pull that back, um, and, and we're also a very large city. So we're, you know, I think folks are going to be looking to see what we do around the signage stuff and try to adopt, you know, similar, uh, some of it. So I want to be careful with that. So as I look at that, that's what I'm looking at, and I hope that answers your questions you have here.
I think so, and, and Mayor Councilman Lowman, if I can add two p- two elements, and I should have explained this better when thinking about kind of the science of dwell time. What you're really, I mean, you can go very strict, and some cities have, as I mentioned. But, um, what you're really trying to minimize is the amount that the sign is changing while, uh, the number of times the sign is changing when one, if you're talking about motor vehicles, when one traveler is passing that sign. And that obviously depends on roadway speed, like I said. But what that gets you to is if you only want that sign to be able to change once for the majority or even a, a good proportion of drivers, you want a dwell time that's a minute or more, not, you know, um, a, a few seconds. Because then there's the potential that, to see multiple changes as a passing, uh, motorist, uh, or traveler. So that, there's that piece of it. Darn it, I forgot the second piece of it. Forgive me. Oops. I'll return to it if I, uh, think of it. Sorry about that. Uh, the other thing I'd say though is that a lot of cities don't have different standards between changeable copy and graphics. And the reason that Bloomington does and some cities do is that graphics are more distracting or more, uh, have more safety, uh, issues. There's just, there is some science behind that.
So you're saying if we were to take this graphics down to one minute, that might only, depending on the speed, really amount to being at one, you know, you're only going to have one change while you're, while you're driving through the, through the area? Is that what I'm hearing you say? And then we would increase the changeable copy up to one minute? Is that, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're?
Forgive me, I didn't, yeah, and Councilman Lowman, I didn't mean to confuse, I think the eight, we were, one thing we were concerned about with, uh, fidgeting with the eight seconds is that there's a lot of properties that have these signs that are already kind of operating under that. So it's kind of hard to put the dragon back in the box.
Which never traves my point exactly, so.
Yes, um, forgive me, but, um, so I think we, I th- I think we still think it is sensical to maintain due different standards because they pose different, uh, levels of, uh, concern or threat, whatever term you want to use, uh, in that regard. So we think that's good. It's not to say that if you lower it just to a minute, that, um, it really depends on the travel speed in terms of how many transitions of the sign you'll see. If you're on a low speed, uh, roadway and it's a thirty-second dwell time and you're on a very long corridor, you can imagine a corridor like Lindell, it's possible you could see two transitions, uh, in that period of time. And so it just kind of depends on what your tolerance is. The second thing, I remember what I was going to say, so I'm going to go back to that. But the nighttime, you, you said you were concerned about the nuisance characteristics. If there's greater concern about the nuisance character, and I have seen other cities do this, you could require the signs to be extinguished, uh, during the nighttime when they're in proximity to residential uses. What we're proposing is either static or extinguished. And the reason that we're proposing that is just that they do, it does have different, uh, levels of enforcement, uh, issues associated with them. If you're going to establish a standard that all electronic signs close to residential uses, and if you think about it, it's a lot of places of assembly, uh, typically have these signs. The city's going to be doing some enforcement on some of those things if it has to be turned off. They might have to still be doing some if it, just to remain static too. But in other words, that's another one of the levers you can pull to be more cautious, as you said, uh, than less. The other thing I didn't say about electronic signs is, or one dynamic, is that this technology is becoming more affordable as time goes on. And so we, 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 within the planning division, very much can envision an environment forty or fifty, or maybe even sooner years from now, where the majority of signs are electronic signs, not, not less, or a small percentage of them because of the cost. So with a lower dwell time, you can imagine every building now has one of these sign types, and their freestanding signs are that sign type. And if they're all allowed to have very low dwell times, you're basically in a situation where you're not able to manage the visual clutter and all of just the bombardment of commercial messages that are along your streetscape. So that's where it really, uh, becomes a concern. And that might be a city council's problem, that, you know, the twenty-sixty city council's problem, not the twenty-twenty-three's problem. But, um, but I also think about the dragon back in the box dynamic that I also just said. So it's, it's tricky. I don't know what, it's tough.
And I appreciate that, and honestly, I hadn't thought about it from that perspective. Although if you play out that scenario, boy, we could go in a bunch of different directions in terms of that as well.
No cars?
I was thinking more on the lines of advertisements on your windshield, on the inside of your windshield projected, you know, I, any number of different things. Regarding the dwell time, I, I would say that three seconds is probably way too short and an hour is way too long. And to look so, thank you. And I, so that, that's why I appreciate, uh, just, just trying to come up with this, this, this eight seconds and ten minutes makes sense. I mean, to make a, an electronic sign worth anything, you, the, the copy's got to be able to change. And frankly, I think we see that also within the city. I mean, you look at Normandale and Eighty-Fourth and, and right out front here and everything else, it, we, we see that. If, if it's, if it's hanging on the same message for far, for too long, it does, there's no benefit to it. There really is no benefit to it. So, um, I, I appreciate the, the eight seconds, the ten minutes. It probably makes sense. I can't say it's the absolute best thing. I can't say it's the absolute worst thing, but I think it, it makes sense for the information that we have. And especially if you've been going through the, the research and the, the data on it and can't find anything that says this is the magic number. I think this, this makes as much sense as anything else. To Councilmember Lowman's point regarding the nighttime restrictions, I think absolutely static between nine and seven AM. If you're anywhere near a residential, um, I, I think that just makes a lot of sense. And, and I don't know if turned off, because you're right then when the enforcement issues come up, but absolutely static. I would hate to see things changing and flashing and, uh, being that much of a distraction in a, in, in the nighttime hours. Anything else on that, Council?
Mayor, the last thing I'll say about it is that I think we've already gotten some feedback, um, uh, concerned about ten minutes. So I'm just, um, that, that's going to come your way.
Good to know. Good to know.
Coming down the pike here. But yes, it's a tricky thing for sure. Thank you for the feedback, though. I think that was it on the specific, uh, on the specific topics. Again, this is one of those ordinances where we almost don't know where to do the specifics. And Councilmember Nelson mentioned the difficulty of going line by line through a, you know, a thirty-five page document. So, um, but I think what we're really interested in is the bigger picture is, are, do we feel we're in a place to move towards a public hearing type setting?
I, I'm, I'm feeling confident. Councilmember Lowman, you want, did you want to make your, your point or ask your question?
No, I got a couple other ones, uh, and I, and I can be just real, real quick. We did talk about the special, um, use sign standard piece, and I, I'd love to come in and talk with you a little bit more about that. I don't want to waste our time up here, uh, you know, get into levels of details. I remember I was here when we were doing the, the sign thing, and I kind of love this stuff. So then my other, my other one is around the area sign piece. So when, you know, we have the, the, the footage limits for the different classes, I, I'm curious a little bit about, you know, about that, those limits on the square footage of the signage. We had it back there the other way. Go back one more, I think. Yeah, this one here, I think, is the, yeah, with the freestanding signs. So the maximum limits that are on, on those particular signs, what was the rationale to, to get you to those maximum limits? And then, you know, because I think about, you know, we, we have with the PMP, you know, the, you know, we do that, that whole, you know, front footage type of thing and then kind of, you know, base the, you know, taxes on that. Uh, I'm just, I'm just curious, but I'll stop there and let you kind of answer, because I may have more questions.
Yeah, Mayor Member, uh, Mayor Councilmember Lowman, good questions. And, um, I think it's, so one thing I didn't mention tonight that I'm going to mention it whenever this does come before a public hearing process, that I think the city is going to be in a better position, uh, with these regulations to do a one-year lookback following its adoption. Because ultimately, we're going to get a lot of data in that first year of like where the ordinance is performing well and where the standards maybe are a little bit out of step or should be evaluated, uh, depending on kind of what we learned or what we gleaned in that first year. So that's one piece of it. How did we arrive at that? Currently, we have flat allowances now, so the hundred, uh, square feet actually matches a lot of the allowances for, um, uh, single tenant and all, the majority of our commercial and industrial standards now. There is some larger allowances for larger multi-tenant sites in the existing sign code. And so the, the, the cap at one hundred, that's really something that you can, it's informed by, uh, what it, what exists today in the sign code. It's also informed by, uh, we looked at over fifty wall signs and twenty-five freestanding signs that we've reviewed in the past. I don't know, five or seven years or whatever it was. And the majority of them are accommodated within, uh, this cap. And the majority of them were accommodated within that point four of having a frontage that the existing sign that was there, uh, met it. But just from our perspective, again, getting back to the purpose of, one of the purposes of signage regulations is to manage the visual clutter of speech as you, uh, travel in, in the public realm. Having a standard that is tied to the, the size of the property, which the best measure is the lot frontage along a public street, uh, just to us made the most sense in terms of how to, uh, distribute, uh, the amount of signage. Uh, we have some small commercial sites or even almost flag sites that even if you had just a very small amount of frontage, you would be granted the same signage allowance as a very large, uh, you know, in some cases, multi-tenant property. And we just don't think that's in, in the same vein or in line with managing visual clutter. So, um, that's kind of what, that's what informed it.
So it is possible that if you have a larger site, that you could gain additional footage from that, from that maximum, is what, what you're saying?
Uh, as it's currently drafted, it would depend on where you're located. So there are provisions for, uh, some sites in special zoning districts, but all the sites along, uh, four ninety-four. So the cap goes up basically, and the sign height goes up if you're along those roadways. Because that was one of the downstream effects of consolidating some of the sign districts is that we currently have the Class Five sign district, which is South Town, and these larger freeway-oriented development sites, they have very large allowances, uh, for signage, both from an area and height perspective. And if you're going to consolidate those things, you have to create locational criteria as opposed to, uh, create, wanting to have them be separate sign districts.
So I guess where I'm, I'm challenged with it, and I'm not suggesting we change it because, again, you know, based on the principle I just said before, once, you know, if you have that much larger and now you're trying to shrink it, you're, that's not going to happen. But the thing that, you know, you, you mentioned that, you know, I, I tend to agree with is of this idea of creativity, by having this maximum on some of these, you know, these rather large sites, you know, that, that can restrict that creativity. So it, it almost contradicts what we're saying in terms of, of that. So that's what, you know, I'm not, not saying for this draft, but maybe as we're, 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 as we're going out further, we want to look at that and see, you know, if that makes sense. I like the lookback idea because that kind of covers that. But, um, that, that seemed to be kind of, you know, just a nuanced contradiction, you know? We want creativity, but we're going to maximize this, you know? And you, and you have to have that from the restriction. I totally get that. But that seemed to, um, and I suppose you could cover it by variance, but, you know.
Ultimately, our goal is that the lead, the, like, I'm going to keep using this word, the, the levers or the lever of what you tweak, say it's not providing enough signage. If, if that's the case, then it can be a very simple or discreet, um, code, uh, change just to that one number or that one multiplication factor later. If we can get the right structure and the right format and the right organization of this ordinance, then the, the little levers, uh, can be easily tweaked quite easily, uh, down the road. But yes, you do have to land somewhere. My computer's dying.
I think that's a, a sign. That's absolutely a sign.
End of my questions then.
I think the final question that I have, uh, looking at the anticipated timeline and looking at the, the work that you've already put into it, into all of this, is that anticipated timeline one that you're comfortable with? And trust me, we're going to get you out of here in just a matter of moments anyway.
That's good. Thank you.
Uh, you're comfortable with the anticipated timeline in terms of getting out to the planning commission public hearing and the city council public hearing and so on?
Yeah, Kevin and I actually, uh, spoke just before the meeting, and, uh, we kind of talked about what our, uh, we kind of strategizing game planned out, um, the next, uh, month or so of activity that sets that up properly. And, uh, we're pretty confident we can meet that. It's going to be pulling together, as I said, all the different cross-references within our code, and there are, there are many of them. So whereas I touted the thirty-five page sign code document, the ordinance itself is probably going to be significantly longer than that, um, unfortunately. We will need, you should do summary publication on that one.
Exactly.
But, uh, yeah, I think we feel good about this timeline and are excited to, uh, move this project along.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a quick question around the billboards. So in the staff report, um, I do agree, I mean, I don't think we should allow more billboards. But the current billboards, my understanding is then that they, they are, um, subject to the same requirements and standards. So, um, if one of the owners of one of the billboards wanted to change it to be an electron- electronic sign, they could within the requirement, like they, they would just have to follow our policy here.
Yeah, Mayor Councilwoman Carter, they definitely would have to follow the dwell time and whatever you establish for that. That is not subject to, uh, that's an operational feature. It's not, uh, subject to a non-conformity, um, like building a structure that doesn't, no longer meets a setback type of thing. So it would, uh, meet that. Kevin's going to want to talk about this one because it's one of his, uh, sweet spots. So, but there's a little bit of, uh, difficulty in understanding because in order to make a sign electronic, inevitably it gets bigger because of the components of it. So you're expanding the physical size of the sign. And there's some, uh, discussion about whether or not that is expanding a non-conformity.
So, um, just as a, like to put this, like to give some context, one, one reason I'm curious is because I'm a former Veep board member. I think you are now, so maybe you shouldn't be part of this conversation. But I believe that Veep actually owns one of the, or, or earns some revenue from one of the billboards in Bloomington. So one of our local nonprofits, right? And if they were able to make it electronic and have more, um, marketing or whatever on that sign, that would increase their revenue. So anyway, I just, I was thinking of it from that perspective. And so, um, so wanted to just better understand, yeah, uh, because it would be making it slightly bigger. Like would, would the owners of these billboards be able to do that or not?
It depends. Um, so I'm Kevin Toski, Assistant City Attorney and Mayor and Members. It's nice to be here. Um, yeah, so our current billboards are legally non-conforming. So the Supreme Court has kind of told us that you really have to key in on physical expansion of non-conformity, not say things like intensity or, um, brightness, things like that. So if they can swap out and get an electric billboard without, you know, expanding the size of the sign, the cabinet, the depth, they could do it. Um, they'd be subject to, to uniform standards with dwell time like Nick talked about. But I'm thinking it'd be pretty tough to do that, um, just based on changing out a cabinet, so.
Got it.
The standard in state, state law is substantially equivalent. So whenever you're making those sizes larger, typically you're encroaching further into non-conforming setbacks or creating other problems too. It's not just the, uh, nature of the, there's others kind of downstream things that happen. nature of the, there's others kind of downstream things that happen.
So if, if some of the owners of these signs came to us and said, hey, we want to be able to do this, would we have to, because they're legally nonconforming, would we just have to change, like, would we have to look at our policy stance as it relates to billboards to allow that to happen, or could we make some changes as we are now?
Uh, Mayor?
It'd still be legally nonconforming, but they would just be allowed to do that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Carter, we'd have to look at, we'd have to change code probably to get there, but it's probably something we could look at
Okay.
Doing, but it would require a code change the way it's written right now, so.
I mean, I personally would be interested in that, but I, again, I'm not interested in like opening up areas for more billboards, but for the ones that are in place, I think you said there's four. I mean, it seems like if they wanted to bring their billboards up to the, you know, current century, like, like they, they should maybe be able to do that. But so I'll just put that out there. Thank you.
And Mayor and Members, our, our current code, you know, billboards are nonconforming, but if you, if you do swap to and can get there to swap to electronic, there's all these several standards that apply that, you know, help with nuisances. So the dwell time, the, I know there's several other, you know, requirements that apply to just electronic billboards too. So nuisances would be managed, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, forgive my poor computer charging skills. Sorry about that. Thank you all very much.
Council, our last item tonight is item 5.3, our city council policy and issue update. I'll just do a, start with a quick recap of our listening session. We had one member of the public come into our listening session, Kevin Heinen. Kevin was parking in the back of his home and parking on what he said was an appropriate surface, and he got a compliance notice from the city saying it wasn't an appropriate surface. We did ask Mr. Verbrugge to direct environmental health to, to directify things, to figure out exactly what the situation was and to, to act accordingly. Mr. Heinen also had other additional questions about a hole in his backyard from a removed utility pole and cut cable lines and a couple of other things. Again, asked Mr. Verbrugge to look into that, and, and we'll get a report back hopefully that things worked out to everyone's satisfaction. The, the second thing that I want to bring up today, I, back on November 22nd, Bloomington lost a a titan of the city. Gil, Gil Williams was just huge, and he passed away at age 87. A heck of a guy, did so much for this community over so long, and we're very sad to see him go. Did not realize that he was actually the chair of the Bloomington HRA and the, on the Bloomington School Board and served with the J C's and the Bloomington Youth Commission. But his biggie, of course, was the Bloomington Community Foundation. He was president there since 1996, also worked quite a bit with Normandale Community College with Artistry. He was, he had a huge impact on this community, and he's going to be missed. And I just wanted to bring that up and send our condolences to his family and send a thanks to Gil for all he did for this community over a long, long time. He did a great work, great work. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add tonight?
No, sir.
Council, anything to bring forward? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you were able to mention that, that it came up at the Rotary meeting as well today. He's also a member of Rotary as well. So I want to be sure we mentioned that as well. The only other thing I wanted to mention is I very much do enjoy our equity, our race and equity and inclusion review of all of our policies. You know, I, one of the things that we have done, I think it was last year, is that we passed a climate emergency. And one of the things I think would be helpful for us to do, just as a, as a deliberate body, is to start looking at maybe adding in that sustainability policy review when we get to the end of a lot of our, our things we look at, maybe not everything. You know, because one question I had that I didn't want to ask, you know, with the sign pieces, you know, you know, is there anything around that? Is there any literature around that idea with the sign thing? Or if you, you know, have the signs located in a certain way or certain materials, if you could put that in there, is there a sustainable benefit to reduction of greenhouse impacts? So if that's something that, you know, that other council members would be interested in, I know that I, as a council member, would be interested in that. As I said, I don't, I know, again, you have to, you know, crawl, walk and run with any policy type of thing. And I think we've, we've gotten pretty far along with the, the race and equity review piece. But I really would like us to start looking at the sustainability, and it might make some sense as we're looking at the sustainability piece, since we have been linking that with the health component of it to, to kind of try to do both things at the same time, so.
Good point, good point. Councilmember Carter?
So I am definitely supportive of that. I actually, I thought we were going to be moving forward on that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter and Loman, we have been inching towards it. You know, we, we're using more of a health and all prism that, that sort of wraps in the equity and the sustainability and the health impacts. So we haven't, we haven't perfected it yet, but we are, we are working towards it.
Thank you.
Council, anything else to bring up? If not, we are through our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thanks much, Council, for your work tonight. Thank you to the staff for the presentation and the information, and to everybody who tuned in. Have a good rest of your week. Thank you.